Mr. Clerk, you ready?
Whenever you guys are ready, I'm ready to start. I'm gonna run through this real quick. Healthy. I feel bad that we didn't invest in that thing. We should have invested in that thing. And it's super, super healthy. Ready? Everyone ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Mr. Clerk.
Strange.
Yes, sir.
Good morning to everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 City Commission Meeting. It's always a pleasure to see so many people here enjoying in our democracy. Again, I always welcome everyone to please engage, and there's multiple opportunities for that, either through Zoom or in person. We also have an opportunity to speak for everyone who is here or who is joining us on Zoom. To start off this morning, we have Father Frank J. Corbischley from the St. Bede Episcopal Chapel at the University of Miami. Father, thank you for being here always. Good morning and welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning to all of you, and let us pray. Gracious God, most of us go through our lives caught up in the busyness of our day-to-day routines, and because of that, we are oblivious to the concerns of the wider world. Those of us who live in the United States, for the most part, are totally unaware of the concerns of people in the developing world. Those of us who live in Coral Gables can be totally oblivious to the concerns of people in Miami or Hialeah. We live in a very, very privileged and beautiful city, but because of our being caught up in the day-to-day routines of our lives, we tend to take for granted our great privilege. We ask you to help us to always be aware of the great privilege that we have to live in such a beautiful place, and we ask that you help all of us, those of us who work in government and those of us who live here and work in other areas, help us all to have an enhanced sense of gratitude for our privilege and help us to leverage our privilege for the benefit of the wider world. Amen.
Amen. Father, we'd like to extend our best wishes to you, your congregation, and we look forward to having you here again worshiping with us in the near future.
Thank you, and I believe you were once a Canterbury dad.
I was.
Yes, I was for nine years, so we have that in common.
Incredible, incredible facility.
Wonderful preschool. Okay. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Commissioner Menendez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations and protocol documents, item A1. Congratulations to Beshear on receiving the Keep Coral Gables Beautiful Award 2022 Commercial Beautification Award. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission. So we're here once again with you to present the third winner of our Keep Coral Gables Beautiful Commercial Beautification Award, and I'm sharing some pictures up on the screen in just a moment, but our third winner is Beshear located at 2020 Salzado. I know that everyone is very familiar with it, and they do an amazing job of upkeeping their surrounding areas from their beautiful entrances to their outdoor dining and the sidewalks in front of their store. So we wanted to congratulate them, and we have Miguel here from Beshear and Belkeys, if you want to say a few words.
Good morning, Belkeys.
Good morning, Belkeys with the Economic Development, Belkeys Perez with the Economic Development Department. We want to thank you for your work. It really shows an attention to detail and maintaining everything clean, and I think that shows up also in the amount of people that you have here. So keep up the good work, and we hope that you are an example to everyone else. Mark, if you want to say a few words.
Good morning, everybody. Mark Chorbridge from our Chamber of Commerce. I think it goes without saying that the work that Miguel and the team at Beshear do are a great example for our downtown, and the only thing that surpasses their beautiful outdoors, of course, are their beautiful desserts that I probably have sampled way too much. So looking forward to continue to honor these great organizations who have risen to the challenge. Congratulations, Miguel.
Miguel, good morning, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you. On behalf of Chef Antonio Achur, his brother, who's Achur, the entire team at Achur Coral Gables, we're feel humble, grateful, and thankful to the City of Coral Gables for presenting us with this commercial beautification award, and let's keep Coral Gables beautiful. And come visit us very soon, okay?
Miguel, thank you for being here this morning. As everybody knows, I probably have three or four meetings a week at Beshear in the mornings. It is an incredible place to wake up and conduct business and also spend time with the family. Your pastries, your food is first class, but one of the things that I always use in an example, and it's very fitting that you're receiving this award, I've said it here multiple times in the Commission, the level of cleanliness, you set the bar in regards to what we aspire to. And when I speak to a lot of other businesses who are, you know, in the process of cleaning their sidewalks, addressing their facades, you know, ensuring that curb appeal is at the highest standard, I always use your business as an example. So I want to say thank you not only to you, to your colleagues, to Armando Godina, Mani Kade, who are the owners of the commercial portion of that building, who always, always go the extra mile to make sure they represent Coral Gables to the highest standard. So I just want to say thank you because you do it at every level, customer service, food, interaction, you know, try to get a reservation and not wait an hour and a half on a Saturday or Sunday. So that speaks volumes because, by the way, you're not in an area which is where you're surrounded by businesses. You're on the, literally at the outskirts of the business district, and that goes to show you that people are willing to travel a little bit further for quality.
Well, we thank you. It's been a team effort. It's easy, but it's not. You have to get better and better every day, and we do it as a team, and we're proud of why we do everything.
Well, you always do business with a smile, and I can't say enough, I can't say enough good things about you. So we want to present them with their plaque with a beautiful picture of the front of their business, and congratulations.
We have a window sticker for you as well that you can put up.
Put it right now.
We can take a group.
One, two.
Thank you very much.
And Miguel, I'll send you a copy as well, and we'll be doing a new story. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Item A2, congratulations to Operator Tania Mateo, recipient of the City Coral Gables Operator of the Second Quarter Award for the months of April through June 2022. Chief, it's always a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for being here with us.
Do you really mean that?
Listen, we're blessed to have you. We're blessed to have every single member of this department and the firefighters who are here, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate you all and showing us and challenging us to what we do in the city, and today we're here to recognize one of our special employees. Tania, if you'd come up, please. I know all of you have heard me say from time to time that the true unsung heroes in the police department are the men and women who answer the 911 calls. Emotionally, it is difficult. Every time you push a button each, you don't know what's on the other side of that phone, and these ladies and men do this every day, 365 days a year, 24/7. The one thing that I have known in my career is I've done this many, many, many years ago, and it is unnerving. Officers know what's coming, communications operators do not every time they push that button. And today, we're honoring and presenting to you our operator of the second quarter. Tania's been with us for 11 years. I'm sorry, she's been here since 2011, and she has, continues to be one of our strongest employees within the division. Part of the problems that we have on a regular basis, as we have talked in this meeting, has been the retention and the recruitment of our communications operators. Recently, we've changed the paradigm. We brought in a new look to everything else, and Tania has been a part of that. For everybody we bring in, we have to train, and part of the training is essential that when you're on by yourself, you're able to talk a mother through CPR of a child, talk a child through CPR for a family or loved one. And when you release those newbies, we have to make sure they're trained, and Tania is one of those trainers. She has been working relentlessly. So as I told you not too long ago, it was the first time we ever had zero vacancies in communications. As some people just can't do this job, they move on. We bring in somebody new. The ripple effect of that is we have somebody like Tania that is there to train them, and she has done just an outstanding job throughout her entire career with us, and we see nothing but a brighter future for her as one of the future leaders within the department. Because of her work and the way she deals with everyone, not just on the phone but in the operations center itself, she was nominated by her supervisor, and we are proud to present you the operator of our second quarter, Tania Mateo.
I just want to say thank you. I'm very honored, and that's it.
That's it? See, when they talk all day long and tell cops where to go, and we put them up here with a microphone, I figured they'd be better than the police officers, but they're not. So on behalf of all of us, Tania, thank you very much for keeping the officers, the residents, and training our new ones every day. So we appreciate you.
On behalf of the city, thank you for everything you and your team do every single day. You're the unsung heroes of the city, so God bless you. Thank you for all the work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Clerk, we have no minutes to approve, so we'll move on to public comment.
We have one member of the public requesting to speak, Mr. Mayor, Maria Cruz.
Ms. Cruz, good morning. We are blessed to have you here. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Well, another day in the big city. Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road, Coral Gables, Florida 33146. Some of you may be surprised. I'm not going to talk about salaries. I'm not talking about vacancies. I'm not talking about solid waste, but I'm talking about something that's concerning. In exactly two weeks, we will have an open seat in this dais. Some of us have been wondering how is it going to be filled. I sent something around hoping to get an answer. I didn't get any answer. I've been reading the paper, how other cities are doing it. We do not know how we're going to do it here. For some people, this may not be a big deal. There's only just a few months from November to April, actually from almost the end of November to April, but do you know how many issues, how many important issues will be discussed in those short months, even though they're short months because there's not two meetings every month? Serious issues will come before you, and it is important that the decision be made and that we know how it's going to be made. The person who you will be selecting will not be chosen by us, will not be chosen by people that will be most affected, which are the residents. I'm sure you all have the right, or you wouldn't do it, to appoint whoever you want. I'm not denying that, but wouldn't it be right to get some ideas from the residents? What about asking interested parties to step up to a plate and show their desire to be considered? We're known, this city, in some places, they make fun of us because we have sunshine meetings for anything that's of interest to the residents. Well, this is an important issue. Why not allow us to have some input before you make the decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. I'd like to have our city attorney quickly address it, and I'm going to make a comment in regards to your questions.
Of course, Mayor. Various members of the Commission have asked me how, in fact, we go forward with doing so. It is in our charter. Within 30 days after the vacancy occurs, the Commission appoints a member to serve until the next election, which we all know is April. The vacancy technically occurs November 22nd because under state law, that is the date. It's two weeks after the date of the election, so when Commissioner Forrest submitted his irrevocable resignation, it had that date on it in accordance, again, with state law, and so November 22nd is the date. 30 days from that is December 22nd. So the anticipated date for appointing someone is the December meeting, which is scheduled for December 13th. Thank you so much. For December 13th.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now that we have the framework in regards to how to appoint somebody, I have no issues, and I know my colleagues don't, accepting recommendations, resumes of whoever would be interested in that position. That can be submitted to the clerk, and that can be disseminated to the Commissioners, the manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. I just want to make sure that the city attorney has a hand in ensuring that it's transparent and that everything is done properly.
Yes, Mayor. There's no process for which, that's established for who gets considered, right? It's up to the City Commission. A resident of Coral Gables, obviously, but other than that, you all want to accept resumes or just...
I have no issues with that at all. That's perfectly fine. Mr. Clerk, do you need some sort of direction on that?
No, sir. I just want to let you know I have one more speaker.
This is Ms. Jessica Keller.
Ms. Keller, good morning. The floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Keller, and my 12-year-old son and I have been members of this community for over 10 years. Quick note, who won the pumpkin decorating?
We haven't found out yet.
Oh, okay.
We're following the charter.
Yes.
It says the city attorney's office. I'm just kidding.
If Public Works made a submission, go Public Works. I came today to speak on two items. First, I wanted to communicate my disappointment in the four-day notice of the sunshine meeting held regarding sidewalks and traffic calming on Venetia Terrace. You have every right to hold a sunshine meeting with four days' notice. I understand that. It was at 8:30 in the morning on a Friday, but you also know very well that this is not the best method to engage residents. The residents that could attend did, and they shared feedback with those who could not attend. I'm fortunate that there are some of my neighbors close to Vinslago who want this to advance, so it likely will. Please consider holding a traditional community meeting about the potential project, where everyone has the ability to speak directly to staff and elected officials, where everyone has the ability to share their ideas and possible solutions. In the absence of continuous accessible information, I've noticed that project websites are no longer on the new website. In the absence of continuous accessible information, a rumor mill has the potential to be generated. We all know very well how quickly misinformation spreads in this town, and misinformation campaign can shut a project down more quickly than facts and data used to justify a project. I want to point out, I did communicate my disappointment to one of the Commissioners, but I did not throw a tantrum and demand the sunshine meeting be shut down. This frequently seems to happen as of late and happened quite a bit when I worked for the city. One particular project comes to mind. The UM Neighborhood Improvement Meeting was shut down simply because Resident Maria Cruz didn't like the area that was notified. There were too many people. The cancellation of this one meeting cost taxpayers nearly $3,000 and took five employees from their responsibilities. If that wasn't bad enough, the meeting was canceled again for the same reason, a different year. I don't know why some residents received special treatment as opposed to all of us being treated the same. How much taxpayer money was spent on removing a semi-desiduous silk floss tree with a semi-desiduous royal ponciana tree for the same resident? It wasn't replaced once, but twice because she didn't like the way it looked. The manager even asked staff to drive her to the nursery to choose the tree herself. Staff aren't supposed to have anyone in vehicles besides other employees. Add to that, royals poncianas in roundabouts at the time were against city policy because only frangial species should be placed in roundabouts due to potential crash severity. The other item I came to discuss today was related to the policy of felons being hired and/or appointed to advisory boards. When I was terminated from the city and the city subsequently settled with me for $100,000, I could never have anticipated the number of residents who began reaching out to me, prominent residents, but probably not prominent enough to get special treatment. So the concern was brought to me about felons being placed in positions of authority. I made a public records request last week for some of the policies, and nothing has been returned. I'm not complaining about that. I know it will come, but if no policy exists related to felons being on boards or being hired by the city, I think it's something that we should talk about. Thank you.
Keller, before you step away, you invoked my name saying that I'm giving somebody special privilege in regards to the Venetia meeting that we had. I don't know what you're talking about. Are you in favor? I'm in favor of sidewalks on Venetia, and I'm in favor of traffic calming.
Yes, I am grateful that the project, yes.
If I just may, I thought that you're also in favor of that.
I absolutely am in favor of it. My concern is that without a proper community engagement process, that a rumor mill will be initiated because it already has.
But let me answer you. Let me answer you. Okay. And Commissioner Anderson, please step in, whatever you'd like. So my understanding, my understanding was that, and it's public record, we were having a meeting. I brought up, along with my colleagues, your neighborhood three or four times, just like I've brought up other neighborhoods in regards to sidewalks and certain things that Public Works is working on. Our Public Works Director said that there were some issues, some concerns in regards to the width of the street and whether a sidewalk could fit because of the trees that were currently in place there. We got into a robust discussion about that. I asked the director, will you do me a favor and will you meet me on site so that we can go over, we can go over, and he's here, we can go over how to fit this sidewalk onto the street? He said, not a problem, Vince, we'll do it on Friday. Commissioner Anderson, I don't want to put words in your mouth, she said, I'd like to join the meeting. So we leaned over to the city clerk. How can we have two Commissioners talking about an item that may be coming for the Commission? They said, we'll have a sunshine meeting. So this was not a public, we had about 20, would you say about 20 residents that showed up?
At least 20.
And we welcomed it. We welcome all the residents show up, but what came out, and I'm going to be talking about it as number, as number five on Mayor's comments, because we have to give direction to the, to the Director of Public Works through the manager, and I have it here, ready to go, and hopefully my colleagues will support me on that, on a proper way to address Venetia, and it's going to take, what did the, what did the Public Works Director say in time? How long?
We're talking about a total of about two years. I mean, this is the beginning of the process.
To implementation, from, from the moment that we get the directive today to the moment that we, I think we've already done a survey, and we move to planning to actually taking it to the county. I've told that I would help out in the county, and then we're going to budget for next year. But there, from my understanding is that we're trying to deliver on sidewalks for the residents who really want it in the neighborhood. So I don't know what rumor mill is starting. You have my support. I think you have the support of the Commission in regards to Venetia. I think it's critically important, and the sole point is that when we do bring this meeting up again, and we do start in the planning process, there will probably be one, if not two, community meetings where anybody can attend, but this was not meant to be a community meeting. The problem is that, like usual, the rumor mill starts with certain blogs, and they just start going crazy, and they start saying things that are not true. On the public record, in the last meeting where I asked to meet with the Director and then Commissioner Anderson said, I'd like to join you. So I said, okay, then how can we, how can we do it? And what did the clerk say? Mr. Clerk, I don't want to put words in your mouth. What did you say?
We could have a sunshine meeting.
It was not intended for the community, but we had a community meeting where everybody spoke freely and they had a conversation, and that's what the meeting was all about.
No, I'm very well aware of process, I'm very well of what the outcomes were, but I also...
That's why it was, that's why, that's why it was held in five days. Was it five days?
I mean, we, we announced the date here during the Commission meeting.
Correct, but then it had to be rescheduled from that original date, and then that's why it came in at the last.
But it was not a community gathering information moment. It was for two Commissioners to meet with the Public Works Director to say, we need to find a way to make this happen. We need to find a way to build sidewalks and also try to save these trees, and some good information came out of it because everybody was of the same consensus that we could make it potentially a one-way street if the county allows us to do that.
Right.
I mean, it was, it was a good meeting. It was a good meeting. We talked about a lot of things. People made their concerns about speeding, garbage pits, the actual essence of all the garbage and everything that's located on Venetia Avenue. So I thought it was a very productive meeting. It was not in reference to collecting information from the residents. That will happen as we move forward in the process, and I will be addressing it. If you wait a few moments, I'll be talking about Venetia, and you can be... If you wait a few moments, I'll be talking about Venetia, and you can be here when we hopefully get the support we need to give the direction to the Director to move forward.
I didn't, I have not received one negative comment from a resident.
Excellent, that's really good news for me. Like I've mentioned to you, I, we do have a street chat, and there were lots of questions and concerns about funding, and if it was converted to a one-way, how difficult it'd be able to get to the street, and that's where my concern lies, is that there were a whole street full of people that didn't make it, people aren't all talking about it, so...
You know, it's the beginning of the process, and you know that I've gone through this with, long, long before I ever ran for office, getting the neighborhood in my area on board for improving Segovia Street and making it a much safer street. This is just the very beginning. I mean, getting out there and doing a site visit sometimes answers more questions than us just sitting up here talking about it, because you could see the traffic problem. I mean, I have a photo that I'm going to post later on in the meeting about, you know, traffic problems we have on Valencia, you know, because everybody doesn't feel comfortable with three lanes there, and if you look at Byrd, we have two lanes, if you look at Ponce, we have two lanes, we have three lanes on Valencia and parking, so no one wants to get close to the cars. But while we were there on Valencia, I mean, Venetia, we could see what was happening with the traffic, we could see what was happening with the pedestrians, and the realistic problem that's there, and which, you know, the traffic studies will determine which way it needs to flow, assuming that everybody agrees that we can make this a one-way street. It's too narrow, it's way too narrow.
So, with that being said, there will be multiple opportunities to speak, to engage with the community, to engage with your residents that live in your community and you live in your block, and I look forward to that.
And my public records request will be filled at some point.
Your public records request, along with every public records request, is always filled, and I find it very interesting because I've never had anybody call me about anybody who's a felon. If somebody's a felon, then we need to speak with our city attorney and find out what is the proper procedure in regards to it.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first time I hear of it. Thank you. Any other further public comments?
No, sir.
All right. I'm going to move on to Mayor's comments, and since we have, since we just discussed Venetia Avenue, this is the first item that I will address. Sidewalk issues on Venetia Terrace and Columbus Boulevard at the next meet, excuse me, at the next meeting, directing our city manager with the assistance of the commission to instruct our Public Works Director to move forward with planning for it to be in the next budget cycle. Anybody who has any questions on that front, you know, please feel free to ask right now, I'd like to get your support and a motion, maybe Commissioner Anderson can make a motion.
I, I will absolutely move that forward.
Okay.
I, I think it's a life safety issue on that street.
I travel down that street almost daily and completely agree as well.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I asked, I asked the manager, please, to have the Director move forward, I'd like to see something potentially in the next two months, in the sense of just scheduling, like how we're moving forward with planning, design, it is not in this budget cycle, it'll be in the next budget cycle, obviously depending on the cost, we need to move to the county. I want to be intimately engaged in this discussion with the county, I already had a conversation with Mr. Cueto on the matter, because I'd like to see, after visiting this site, as many of my colleagues are aware of what's going on, this is a very, in my opinion, dangerous situation for pedestrians. That street, when you put two cars next to each other, is so tight that they're already on the soil, and we had Commissioner, one or two parents who showed up with strollers, and they gave examples of how they take their children on the grass and how difficult it is. And we also need to address the backs of the homes on Venetia, the overgrown, the overgrown trees are pushing people onto the street, we need to cut back on the shrubs, and the amount of garbage that's there is unacceptable. Commissioner Anderson, am I speaking out of turn?
Well, you, you also have, you know, the amount of garbage and so forth gives no place for refuge if a pedestrian needs a place to go, plus you have Bougainvillea, you know, so not only is it not refuge, it's dangerous, absolutely dangerous.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item. The Harvest Market. These past weeks, as the weather is cooling off, it's been great to see so many residents and visitors in our city. It's been a busy couple of weeks with the Pumpkin Patch at Pond Circle Park, which I had the pleasure of attending, and the past weekend we hosted Adventure Day at Salvador Park, and the first installation of this year's Harvest Market. I want to salute Nicolas Cabrera and his team. He brought the idea to the city last year, when we had breakfast one day, and this year in partnership with the city, he is running the market. Not only is, not only is it a great event, but this event also activates our North Ponce neighborhood and businesses. I think a great model of a public-private partnership, and one we should continue to explore for other events. This coming weekend on Saturday, in addition to the Harvest Market, there are several Halloween-themed events, including a trick-or-treat on the Mile, which our Economic Development Department is organizing, thank you Belkies, and which I am sure will be a huge success. In addition to trick-or-treating at more than fifty of our businesses, there will be other activities for all others to enjoy, like face painting, a haunted graveyard, and a magician. And as part of my plan to work with local consultants, consulate, excuse me, to host cultural events in our city, I'm proud to say that the Day of the Dead celebration returns this Saturday, bigger and better than, than the event with a new location just outside of City Hall. A big thanks to the Mexican consulate for working with us, it should be a fun event that brings people to our downtown. Also on Saturday, a doggy Halloween costume contest at the Coral Gables Museum, Commissioner Menendez will, will host one of his monthly movie events at the Art Cinema with the Omen, thank you for continuing to do that tradition, people love it, and the Pumpkin Flow takes place at the Venetian Pool. The Actors Playhouse at Miracle Theater is also getting in on the fun with a costume parade and Charlotte's Web matinee on both Saturday and Sunday. Our friends at the Rotary Club will host Chili, Chili-Chillin Cook-Off at Pond Circle Park on Sunday, and on Monday, the Haunted House Nightmare at 405 returns to the youth center. We hope our residents enjoy these family-friendly events, and know that they are also important to our business community, as we activate and we continue to push forward in our downtown. I mention these because Fred and his team are incredibly busy, our staff is incredibly busy, but this is the type of quality of life that we offer here in the city, and as we get into the season, I'm excited about all the things that we're doing here, and I commend the manager and his team, and my colleagues in the commission for doing a great job. I also want to mention, and if the manager can give us a quick update on Burger Bobs, because I've gotten a few emails on that, where are we in the process, and when are we going, when are we going to finally showcase what we've been working on in regards to design?
We plan to do a resident outreach in December, beginning of December, the design is just about complete, and ready to be...
Yeah, we, we, we have, we have some concept designs that we've done, that we're going to show the public, and we are looking at the Thursday right after the tree lining, so I think it's December eighth is the one that we're planning on right now, and we'll, we'll get the hang, the, the door hangers out, and we'll get all the publication out of the exact date.
Okay, perfect, you know, I don't know if the door hangers, if the door hangers are necessary, that's a lot of effort for staff, but I mean, I think we put it in our, in our, in our, I'm just saying, I mean, if my colleagues may disagree, I mean, people use Burger Bobs all over the community, so it's not like you're going to be just, maybe the neighboring community's fine, but I, I just think that more than anything, just put it out there, put it out on social media, put it out there on, on, on e-news, you know, two weeks in advance, and just tell people, "We'll have some hors d'oeuvres, we, you know, we want you to come and check out what, what we're doing in regards to Burger Bobs," and it's, people are anxious, they're, they, they really are looking forward to coming back.
And Mayor, when I said the, the design was complete, I meant on a preliminary basis to, to be reviewed by, by, by the residents.
Yeah, I mean, we're not done with the design, this is preliminary, conceptual, once the residents give their input, and if, you know, some, we, we miss something all the time in regards to construction. Somebody with a keener eye points it out, and we'll change it, or we'll move things around. So Commissioner Menendez?
No, just one thing, I was at La Park Cafe the other day, the food was great, the coffee was great, and I heard, and I think in the next few days or weeks, the menus are going to expand, I know your team with Carolina and everybody, they were working behind the scenes to get, I think, certain licensing and certain things to, for the benefit of the country club, things that nobody knows, but they're working diligently hard. I think I heard they picked up several in one day, so they're busy bees, so if you could maybe talk a little bit about their moving forward to expand the menu?
I know that we've, they've slowly started to expand already, they've got some sandwiches, they've got some soups, they're going to get to that full menu, they've hired more staff, they have a, a new chef, they have a waitstaff, so they'll be able to do the table service to the hallway, which would be good, and probably in terms of the licenses, the most important one is the beer and wine license, we got it. So once, once we got that set up and they have their product in place, they will look to expand their hours a little later, so that's all in the process. We meet with them every week, and we, we discuss, you know, the, the different strategies till we get to a complete full operation with them.
Yeah, I, I am sure like everybody else, encourage residents to go there and experience family-run, quality food, obviously the ambiance, the atmosphere, great family dining, so, you know, I encourage folks to give it a, you know, go there and have a wonderful lunch or breakfast.
We did have a good tennis event for our members, another one of our membership events that we're trying to do once a month, and we had it this past weekend, and it went really well.
Wonderful.
So, a couple suggestions on notifying residents.
Yeah.
Well, and you have a great spot to put a sign up in front of La Park.
Sure.
Okay, nice big bull print, the people that are patronizing that will most likely see that. And then we had a, a group of individuals that was in here, you know, in favor of Burger Bobs.
Right.
We have a very active list.
Yes.
We know who the interested parties are, so let's reach out to those folks and...
We'll do. They've, they've already been contacting us, actually, we're, we're going to be able to get the word to them, because they're, they're contacting me, asking me when, when we're going to do it, so, so they're on top of it.
Yeah, no, they've contacted me, they would like a little more retro on the furniture, the red seats, you know, stuff.
They'll be able to look at it and give us a, we'll, we'll take a look and see.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Fred, thank you again, I know you're juggling a lot of things, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you on that. I'd also like the support of my colleagues, I have to amend the resolution in regards to the Mayor's Ball. All monetary contributions and the ultimate proceeds from the Mayor's Ball will be administered by the Liga Contra Cancer instead of the Coral Gables Community Foundation. The monies that come from the event will go one-hundred percent to La Liga Contra Cancer and also the Coral Gables Community Foundation, but this was just a minor tweak in the resolution.
Absolutely.
I have it here.
We need a motion if we're going to amend the resolution.
Want to move it?
And I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one, one final item that I want to bring to your attention, and again, just taking advantage of the fact that we're here together. So, I mentioned to you, I think before, I can't remember what day it was, we talked a little bit about homelessness in our community, and some of the things that are, that are going on, and the commitment that we have as a community, where we're spending almost thirty thousand dollars a year for Camilla's House for three beds, that's a big commitment by the city, and to say that Camilla's House is short is an understatement, they're doing the best of what they can with limited resources. The massive influx of immigrants into this country, especially illegal immigrants as a result of the border, have had serious implications in regards to the homeless population. And this is not me speaking, the manager was with me, along with our police chief, and my staff, we had breakfast last week, I took Paul Loenthall, who is the chairman of Camilla's, Chief, would you like to come up? We, we had a really good discussion, I think for probably about an hour and a half, talking about homelessness in our community. While it's not a major problem, it, I have seen, I have personally seen a tiny uptick, I've seen a tiny uptick, which our police department has done an incredible job addressing certain issues with private property. But you're seeing certain people panhandling around the community, and they're very careful because they know that we have very strict panhandling laws. But I wanted to bring this to your attention because we're going to be working in concert in a more robust way with Camilla's House, really pushing the agenda of trying to get these individuals help. It's not about arresting these individuals and taking them to jail, that doesn't work, it's a proven fact, it's just, it's a machine, it just keeps basically producing the same effect. But I had a very interesting encounter, because I spoke this Sunday to one of the individuals that I've seen, a new individual that I've seen walking through our city, a gentleman, very nice guy, short in stature, on Miracle Mile, I asked him, look, I, I engaged him in a conversation, I said, "You know, I, I've seen you here around a few times, you're always in the Miracle Mile walking," he says that everybody here is very complimentary, very nice, "it's safe." I said, "No, of course, it's safe, what's the issue?" He says, "Well, you know, I'm just trying to get back to Texas, and I want to buy a plane ticket out of here." So I told him, you know, "Why don't you come by City Hall, and I hope you, I hope you, with acquiring that's what you want to do." But it's interesting, because we're seeing a lot of new faces, not a lot, I mean, we're seeing a few new faces here in the city, that they're coming down, and then I guess as winter comes, they leave or they stay, I'm not sure exactly what's happening, and that was the purpose of our meeting with Paul last week, to have a real discussion on, on the home, homeless issue.
Yes, sir, I think to your point and throughout discussion, I mean, again, homeless people are not problems, they're people with problems, and, and that's how the police department addresses them. I think what we have increased is our interaction with the individuals of offering assistance on a regular basis. To your point and what we discussed, the safety that our citizens feel, also the homeless population feels as well. They feel safe in sleeping in certain areas, there are certain business owners that are okay with that, again, that's private property, however, in the mornings, they get up and they, and they kind of go to different parts of other cities, because they know that they cannot ask, they can't aggressively panhandle, they can't go up to people on the sidewalks because they, they realize that we, we do not allow that, and that's where our interaction goes. We have addressed all the issues that come up, to your point, I think we have in the past, along with Public Works and working with, with our team here in the city, we've been able to, people with mental challenges that create shopping carts that are almost a story-high worth of things, once that's, you know, we get help for the individual, and then Public Works has worked primarily under the Metro Rail to continue to do that. It, it's an educational process for those who come from different parts of the country, they do ask for those. We have reextended our bed space that came for years, Commissioner Vice Mayor Casada actually brought that up, I think in two thousand fourteen or fifteen. We have a longstanding relationship with them, I'm, I'm trying to get the funding to, because as everything else, those costs have gone up as well, for those beds, if we can increase it, right now, we've had, we have three beds, we are constantly, or two of those, we have one, one person that's been in that bed for a year, and we've continued to fund that, we're, we're working on, on re-appropriating some funds to make sure we can continue, because those numbers is also from Camilla's House has gone up. As we continue to, to come up with a plan that locate, identify, and render services, there are certain issues that we've had to address as well legally, with when we're receiving calls of people, to try and address through the communication operator you met today, of addressing that being homeless and sitting on a park bench is not illegal, we can render aid, but we cannot move people along, there's a lot of case laws that other cities have been subjected to because of that. So, in a nutshell, we continue to work with Camilla's House and other entities, the officers understand that it, it's a, it's a priority for the city to render assistance to those individuals that are residentially challenged, if you will, and living in our cities amongst our streets. So, we continue to go forward with that, and, you know, again, once we are notified of somebody, we will respond, that's what we want, we're working with the manager's office to come up with a hotline for homeless assistance, not to necessarily provide that or, or refer them off, but for us to get involved, and not tie up some of our, our nine-one-one or our non-emergency numbers, so, again, I, I, it's not just us, it's everywhere, I think all the other municipalities and other chiefs have the same challenges.
Thank you, Chief, and by the way, I also met with, with the manager last week with the Commissioner for City of South Miami, and they're also facing some, some of the similar issues, and they're just trying to get ahead of it, and they're going to work collegially with, they're trying to get five or six municipalities to find real options from the county, so if you are interested in getting involved, please speak with the manager, any ideas, I welcome them, but we have to, we gotta face this issue, especially with the underlying that's forthcoming, and a lot of other amenities that are potential, potential opportunities here in the city. On the Mayor's comments, I have nothing else, I know that we're pulling, as per Commissioner Anderson's request, item G1, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I...
Mr. Mayor?
I think we've resolved that.[1753.38]
Oh, yes. Ms. Cruz would like to say a few words.
This is very short. Some of you do know that at church we have coffee and donuts after masses. And this Sunday, it broke my heart to see this lady very dressed for church. I mean, she looked professional, except that she had a backpack and several packages with her. So she approached me and she said, are you selling? How much are they? And I said, no, we have them for people to stay after mass. And she says, may I have a donut? So she ate a donut, then I offered her coffee. Then she was early for the next mass, so she hung around with me. And then when I was picking up, I said, you know, we do have a pantry, I can make things, you know, I can, whatever you want. And she says, but I wouldn't accept it unless I could do something to help you. So she went in the kitchen and she helped me clean up. It was very, very heartbreaking to see somebody like that, okay? But now, also, in case you all do not know, bakeries, restaurants, supermarkets throw away a lot of food. I've been, my husband and I have been doing it for years. We go down south and we pick up at a bagel place and a bakery. Some people know because I talk to them on the phone while I'm driving, and then we take it to Camilla's House. If you could set something up, so instead of throwing out the stuff, we could have volunteers pick up, take it to Camilla's House, that would really help.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Mr. Clerk, moving on to consent agenda.
Before the vote adopted, the consent agenda is taken. Is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 2-1.
2-1 is a resolution of the International Affairs Coordinating Council expressing their desire for the City of Coral Gables to establish a sister city relationship with the city of Stellenbosch, South Africa.
Good morning, everyone. Belkis Perez with the Economic Development Department. I believe we have Brett Gillis on Zoom, and he is a member of the International Affairs Coordinating Council that will be making a presentation.
Mr. Gillis, good morning.
Morning, everybody. Hello, good morning. This is Brett Gillis. I'm here, leaving ball, received a copy of the resolution and the background memo on the item before you. At our last International Affairs Coordinating Council meeting, we had made a unanimous recommendation to the City Commission to consider establishing Stellenbosch, South Africa as a sister city. So many things in common between the two cities, both university towns, garden cities, rich history, rich architecture, and I'm here available if you have any questions. Thank you.
So this was reviewed and vetted through the boards of the city? It was addressed, it was reviewed?
Yes, and so it was Mr. Gillis who brought this city to the board. They decided, they had talked about it in October 18th, 2021. There was no quorum at some point, and they had other things, other matters that they were dealing with. And for that reason, it just came to the board again for approval, and it passed unanimously.
Okay. You know, I'm always concerned when you tie another city to our city, because I wanna make sure, obviously, that we hold everyone to the higher standard and similar standards that we hold ourselves to. So, you know, if the board feels comfortable, and my colleagues have any other further questions or statements?
I guess my, I have two questions. One is what are the criteria, if any? And two, is there any cost associated with having sister cities? And if so, what is it?
There is no cost associated. There are really loose criteria, and I think that's an area where we need to step in and create more of a defined criteria.
What's the objective, if you will?
The objective is to have cultural exchanges, economic development purposes, to have just mutual, things that we can mutually benefit from. So whether it is bringing businesses to the city, vice versa, or have some cultural events, but that is the goal. And so that's what we try to do with all of our sister cities.
Look, I don't have an issue. I happen to have been to Stellenbosch, South Africa. It's a lovely place. It's kinda like Napa Valley, actually, in a lot of ways. It's their wine region. I don't know how much business, exchange there's gonna be between Stellenbosch, South Africa and Coral Gables. I'm not really sure. Again, lovely place, I recommend it for people, you know, to visit. I'm not opposed to it because it doesn't cost anything, and that's fine, but I'm not, it's so far and so challenging to get to and such a different type of economy from ours that, you know, there's not a lot of overlap there. So that's why I asked about the criteria and trying to understand sort of what the objectives are because seems to me you would have sister city programs with places, A, where you have more travel to and from, more exchange opportunities, right, and that have similar, I don't wanna say economies, but generally speaking, that have the type of businesses that you might see some sort of exchange involving. So, that's all. Again, it's a lovely place, recommend it. But I think we should have maybe at some point, another point, a conversation about what we're really looking to get out of this and how we get there.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission?
I do wanna point out, Mayor, if I could, the third whereas clause, there's a Scrivener's error. It should read, "The IACC discussed Stellenbosch, South Africa as a possible sister cities for Coral Gables." So, was introduced, needs to be crossed out.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
Make it.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you, Belkis. Moving on to F1, ordinances on second reading.
F1 is an ordinance of the City Commission authorizing the city to enter into a lease with Francesco's Miracle Mile Elcia Delaware Limited Liability Company, DBA Francesco Restaurant, and with regard to the city-owned property 278 Miracle Mile, Florida, for a period of seven years with two additional five-year renewal options at the city's discretion, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. There have been no changes between first and second reading. This does have to pass by a forfeits vote.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any other questions or comments from first reading?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it. I think it's...
Mr. Clerk, for the record, there's no one wanting to speak?
No, ma'am.
Starting opportunity. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Belkis, when do we expect them to open?
It'll be probably a, I think, at least a year, I think, maybe.
Mayor, they're spending about over, about $1.3 million on the interior, so they'll be redoing all the interiors. It'll take about a year.
Okay. Are they, have they commenced already working on design?
I believe so, and we're going to expedite everything through our...
That was my next question.
Yes.
We'll expedite everything.
I really, really would like for the city to expedite these plans and have them reviewed as quickly as possible. Even if we could allow them to start, you know, demolition with a separate permit and then literally transition, where they can start framing and doing some of the MEPs until their permit is approved. We have made that concession to certain other entities and residents here. What I would like to see is, this has been dormant for such a long time, and I think that corner of our city really could use, could use a little bit of life. And I wanna make sure that we make it as flexible as possible, especially with the investment that they're making in a city-owned property.
We plan on expediting everything as much as we can, Mayor.
I think that area, that area with a new Mexican restaurant, when that's done, hopefully next door, the old jewelry store will become, you know, something that will draw more people to that area. And then with this restaurant across the street, I think that could be a real focal point for the city.
Quick question, not exactly on this unit, but two other units that are, I believe, are city-owned. So, for sure, the one in between the Haagen-Dazs and the Starbucks, there's like a clothing store. Is that still a pop-up? Okay.
It is a pop-up. We renewed them for a second term.
Got it, okay. And there's another store, but I don't know, I don't think it is ours. It's like a, it's on one of the breezeways, it's got like a little plant.
We own, we own...
Branda.
Yeah, but we own, we own the Starbucks, we own too.
I know, I know, I know. But there's another unit that's, you know which one I'm talking about?
Well, that, yes, on the...
Is that ours?
No, it is not ours. That is Ternova, and there is a lease in place.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so one of the things I wanted to, and I leave it up to you, Belkis, you can clarify if I fall short. There isn't many spaces available left on Miracle Mile.
No, no. I mean, I've got the figures here. The vacancy rate is, I think, 1.9 on Miracle, actually not on Miracle Mile, excuse me. The vacancy rate in the city right now is 1.9 for retail. And for Miracle Mile is 5.4. That's very healthy when you're under 10%.
Yeah, and if you drive by, you'll see the open shops, a lot of them are under construction.
There's a lot of...
There's a lot of coming soon signs, which is healthy and good for Miracle Mile because when those places, when more restaurants and more opportunities like galleries and stores open up, they just, it's a symbiotic relationship. They just feed off each other, so it's very beneficial.
There has been an uptick in people coming to us asking for those window wraps, those temporary window wraps, because they are getting ready to start construction, so that's always good.
Can we also look into, since you bring up temporary window wraps, can you look at the OG Ardino site? I think we brought it up. They do not wanna comply with a temporary window wrap. I don't know why.
We've reached out and code can speak to that, but they have been, there are violations right now in place for them.
I mean, the purpose of the wraps is just to beautify the city and make it uniform, and we've made it as simple as possible. We've actually made it simpler than before. So, thank you for your effort.
Do you have, sorry to interrupt, any information, updated information on the California Pizza Kitchen site, such a great location?
It is under construction. It's being built out already.
Is it?
It is, yes. There is work that's happening inside. We've been on the street several times recently, and it's under construction. I don't want to butcher the name, but I believe it is Capital Burger.
Oh, sounds good.
That's what's coming in now.
It's a, it's a lower rung on the Capital Grill.
Yes.
It's like a... It's like the Shula's 347 kind of thing. That's a great, I think for that area, conceptually, it's great. We saw the, we were walking by, my family, I saw some construction, figured something's happening. So, I'm sure a lot of folks in the community used to go to that spot and being close to the theater, so thank you for the update.
It's a good spot for that, for Actors Playhouse.
Phenomenal, exactly. That's great news.
It's a block from my office, so yes, that was frequent and...
I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we have one, we're there?
We already did it, yes.
Moving on to F2.
F2 is an ordinance of the City Commission providing for a text amendment to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code by revising Article 15, notices, section 15, 102, notice, subsection 3. Mail notices providing that when a notice radius extends outside of the city limits, notice shall be mailed outside of the city limits only to the addresses that are within 500-foot radius of the property that is subject to the application, providing for severability clause, repealer provision, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. I believe there's been no changes between first and second.
I'll move it.
Second.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to F3.
F3 is an ordinance of the City Commission amending the City of Coral Gables Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 8, Procurement Code, Section 2-696, Procedure to Provide Preference to Coral Gables-Based Vendors in Contracts for Goods and General Services to Out of Preference from Miami County, Miami-Dade County-based vendors. Define principal place of business and expand and clarify the preference in competitive bids, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. There have been no changes since the first reading. Happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you very much for my colleagues' support. I think this is a good piece of legislation that will hopefully bring value to the city, will become more competitive, and really focusing on local companies so that our money stays here locally, which will benefit our community and really, really take us to the next level. So, thank you for the support. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to F4. Thank you.
F4 is an ordinance of the City Commission approving the vacation of a public alleyway pursuant to zoning code, Article 14, Process, Section 14 to 11, Abandonment and Vacations of City Code, Chapter 62, Article 8, Vacation, Abandonment, Enclosure of Streets, Easements, and Alley's by private property owners, and the city application process providing for the vacation of a north-south public alleyway lying between lots 9 and 16, lots 8 and 17, Block 97, Coral Gables, Riviera, Section 2, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Plat Book 28, Page 18 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, providing for a substitute utility easement, setting forth terms and conditions, providing for severability clause, repealer provision, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. It is also a quasi-judicial item. Mr. Clerk, can you swear on anyone who is going to be testifying on this item?
Please swear affirm the testimony provided today will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Hermes, yes, Poli Works Director. There are no changes to the item, however, is a few things that I need to read into the record. More specifically, the stamp findings in relation to the standard for review. The existing inactive and unpaid alley is not being used by the city for any of its legislative purposes, and is not currently providing a public benefit. The alley and abiding properties were originally part of 1927, and originally that area was envisioned to be a commercial corridor, but that never, that was never developed. The eight-platter lots were developed in the 50s and they're single-family homes. There is no plan or capital improvement project that anticipates the use of the alleyways. The existing alley does not currently provide a benefit to the public health, safety, welfare, or convenience of the surrounding community. As an unimproved and unpaid alleyway, it is currently maintained by the abiding property owners and Florida's single-family homes. One of the recommended condition of approval requires that the vacated alley will remain as a utility easement. This is a requirement of the utility companies, no objection to the vacation of the alley. There are no planning efforts of the city that will interfere with the vacation or abandonment of this alley. The request alley vacation will increase the size of the abiding single-family properties and taxable areas. There will be no increase in intensity of the single-family residence use. The public health, safety, and welfare, nor the parking and traffic will be impacted. There are also a number of conditions that are attached to this resolution. A utility easement is hereby reserved for the installation, maintenance, and operation of any utility located or to be located in the alley vacated by this ordinance. That the respective utility company should have access to utility easement as necessary to inspect, install, maintain, operate, repair, and replace any poles, wire, pipes, or any other facility or equipment necessary for the maintenance and operation of the utility. That the utility easement described shall at all times be kept free and clear of any and all encrochements and obstructions unless otherwise approved in writing by the Poli Works and Development Services Director. And shall be in accordance with applicable codes, including but not limited to the City Code, the zoning code, and the Florida Building Code. And the city should have the authority to monitor and enforce the same. That any encroachment that is approved by the Poli Works and Development Services Director shall be subject to removal at the property owner's expense if necessary for the installation, maintenance, and operations of a utility. That it shall be the responsibility of the respective property owner to restore or replace any encroachment damage or remove during the installation, maintenance, and operation of a utility located in the easement. And that the use of the vacated alley shall be limited to the same uses to which the adjacent properties are zoned. And lastly, the direction it writes to the portion of the vacated alley which are referred to the owners abiding east side of the vacated alleyway.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the Commission? Any concerns?
No concerns. We have had no changes since first reading.
No changes.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
I don't think we have, we don't have any public comment, right?
We do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to F5.
An ordinance of the City Commission amending the City of Coral Gables Code, Chapter 10, Animals, Article 2, Dogs, Section 2, 10-33, Dogs Running at Large Prohibited, Leash Required, Penalty for Violation of Article 2, Out an Exemption for Leash Provision for Dogs Within Posted and Designated Off-Leash Dog Parks and Facilities, Providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Mr. Tobias?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. There have been no changes since the first reading. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer them.
I entertain a motion?
I'll move it, but I just, for purposes of public, sometimes it's misinterpreted. Before this, no dogs were allowed to be off-leash on any park, correct?
This basically creates a very small exception that we currently have. Currently, there's, you know, you're an exception for service dogs and things of that nature. This basically states if we have a designated park that's specifically designated as off-leash, your dog can be off-leash there. That's it.
So, yeah, and we have some parks coming, so I'll move it.
And before I second, just, I already said it the first time, but since people watched maybe the second time, not all dog parks will be unleashed, only a few designated by the city. I just want that clarification, avoid confusion later. Okay.
I'll second.
Well said.
Perfect.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to items F6 and F7, which are related.
F6 is an ordinance of the City Commission providing for a text amendment to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code by amending Article 2, Zoning Districts, Section 2-102, Multi-Family, One-Duplex Sister to Modify and Clarify Provisions related to garages and driveways, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item.
Mayor Cabrera, how are you?
Good. Good morning.
Always, always great to see you.
Thank you. Same here. There's been no change since first reading.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the Commission? Any other concerns?
No public comment?
No.
Mr. Clerk, F6.
I'll move it.
Second.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to F7. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes. An ordinance of the City Commission providing for a text amendment to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code by amending Article 10, Parking and Access, Section 10-106, Visibility Triangle to Modify and Clarify Provisions related to convex mirrors, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item.
No changes? Any other comments?
Second.
Mr. Clerk? Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forrester?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Mayor Lago? Yes. Ordinance on first reading, F eight.
An ordinance of the City Commission amending Chapter seventy-eight utilities, Article one in general, section seventy-eight dash one utility easement, Article six underground utility, section seventy-eight two eighty through seventy-eight two eighty-two of the Code of Ordinances, by requiring attaching utilities to underground and remove co-located facilities, requiring pole owners to remove redundant utility poles, providing for procedures related to major hardening projects and requiring property owners to cooperate and comply with access to utility easements, access to property and location of facilities, providing for severability clause repealer provision codification, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Ms. Levy Garcia.
Good morning, Naomi Levy Garcia, Assistant City Attorney and Intergovernmental Affairs Manager. So the City Commission recently adopted Resolution twenty-two, one ninety-seven, which accepted FPL sub-program. This ordinance helps the city realize the full benefit of the sub-program. It promotes the elimination of redundant poles. It facilitates the removal of equipment attached to poles and it encourages coordination between pole owners and the attaching entities during undergrounding and hardening projects. The ordinance also requires individuals to reasonably cooperate in permitting the acquisition of utility easements and to allow the access to existing utility easements. So with the passage, with the passage of this ordinance, we hope to basically not just facilitate the undergrounding, but to get rid of all of those redundant poles that will necessarily result once the electrical utility removes its facilities from those poles. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Pretty straightforward. Are there any public comment?
No, sir.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forrester?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Naomi, if you could do me a favor in the commission, if you could have a conversation with FPNL to see how the progress is coming along and planning for the undergrounding and seeing what we're going to have. I know we're supposed to have like a kickoff, kickoff discussion in twenty twenty-three, or I think it's actual groundbreaking in certain neighborhoods. So I just wanted to see if you could get us any information on that.
Absolutely. We've already had a conversation to try to align our communication strategies to plan for how we're going to communicate with the residents, to let them know that this project is incoming and about to start and encouraging their cooperation. And I'll absolutely follow up to figure out when we can have that kumbaya moment with FPL.
I know they're working hard and obviously there's like, one of the reasons for this legislation is obviously we got to work in concert with other utility companies to make sure that just because you go underground in regards to FPNL, you still have a pole there until other utilities are removed. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done, you know, a lot of coordination. And I want to make sure that we're, I know our staff is, but just want to reiterate on the record, just continue to work together to get this done as quickly as possible.
Yes, Mayor. We're keeping our team together because I think as this moves forward, we need to follow what FPNL is doing. And, and so our team is, we're maintaining our team throughout this, this process. There's also the redundant pole issue that we want to make sure that once utility gets out, which is really FPNL now, that the communications goes also, goes also underground. So we, we plan on, on monitoring everything that's, that's going on. And, and so by maintaining our team, we, we will effectively do that.
Thank you, sir.
Just one other comment, if with the support of my colleagues, when we get to the point where we can start planning out where, or an FPNL is planning out the sections of the city they're working on first, just like we had, you know, traffic calming initiatives, we gridded it out to let people know when their neighborhood is going to be addressed.
We have our own website coming up for that. So we will have a website that, that you can look, that you can find out what FPNL, what, what is going on as far as undergrounding. We, our, our big issue, of course, is, is the easement issue. But, but that's why, that's why I mentioned that, that we are retaining our team throughout this process to make sure that we monitor what's going on and we relate that to, to our residents. As far as how it's going to progress, it's going to progress based on the engineering requirements, the electrical engineering requirements and, and for that distribution system.
Okay. So it's just information for the residents.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to skip F nine because that's time certain, either between ten thirty and eleven. So we're going to move on to City Commission items, G one, discussion regarding a residential parking permit program. Oh, excuse me, that was already.
Yeah, that's the one that's been otherwise resolved.
Item G two.
G two. We have a picture to put up. Let's see if we can, picture's worth a million words here. I went through on Valencia, see if we can bring that picture up. Can we click on that item? It's uploaded to the agenda. So I went on Valencia and I was wondering why I was being crowded out of the middle, middle lane. And if you look, you know, I shot this through my windshield, so I'm sorry, guys. But if you look at the parking on the left, you can see that people are not parking properly. There's the vehicle that you see, there's a Porsche ahead of it with its front end hanging out. And then if you look at the vehicle on the right that's straddling the lanes, you can see why the traffic flow is not effective in that section of Valencia. And, you know, I had to beat the horn at the individual just someone else sideswiped me earlier in the day. And when I came back through, I said, oh my God, no wonder. We have three lanes there. But if you look at Ponce, we only have two lanes. If you look at Bird Road, we only have two lanes. So this may not be the most effective use of the space. And as we're discussing a bike lane to and from the mobility hub, we may want to look at bringing this back down to two lanes, safer lanes. And it may be that Dover Coal decides that the return route from the mobility hub can be built into this in a much safer travel lane process. So I just wanted to bring that photo to your attention so you can see the situation we have on Valencia between, there's the post, you can see Publix, you see the back end of the post office there. And I'm sitting at the intersection of Ponce, heading the rest of the way east.
My, my experience with that area right there is, we see three lanes, but you can tell by the way the SUVs parked on the left-hand side, it's really almost two and a half. It's, there's little room for error. And, and I've seen chaotic situations there. So it probably could, we could do probably something a little bit better, safer.
Right. Food for thought here.
Yeah.
So that's it.
The issue you're going to have there is less about, I think, whether we're able to reduce to two lanes is one thing, but if you're going to do a bicycle path, you're probably going to have to eliminate some parking.
Not necessarily. If we eliminate one lane and move it over, and this is why we have Dover Coal in here in the room, because I'm not an expert on traffic planning. And I'd like, you know, that we have a traffic expert in here. A right-hand turn lane may be necessary, a left-hand turn lane may be necessary as we get close to intersections. And they need to plan it out. But we definitely have a problem here with people parking and using the lanes because they feel uncomfortable being next to the vehicles.
I think Commissioner, I think what you would like to initiate is Dover Coal also includes, also include Valencia in their, in their connectivity to the mobility hub. Is that, is that what you're proposing?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we had that discussion earlier and we included Valencia. We need for, you know, someone that can plan this properly to establish what is the best option for the bicycle travel because we have a complex set of intersections to deal with. So.
As you know, Dover Coal are actually planners. They will work with, with our transportation manager and, and our traffic consultants to make sure that everything works out from a, from a traffic perspective. But if the commission wishes, we can certainly add Valencia as part of that study also.
Thought we had done that because there's no, you know, in order to make an effective circulating route for bicycles on there to the mobility hub, you have to get back somehow. And you can't put the salmon upstream back on to Andalusia. So you have to bring the route back on a street that heads west. And Valencia is the next closest one. And it, and it appears to have the space, more space than any of the other streets.
We can certainly look at that and look at, look at Biltmore Way, Anastasia, and then, and then Valencia, incorporate that into the Dover Coal study.
Right. Yeah. Because remember, we've had the discussion that the Villa Valencia is got provision in a development agreement to put a bike lane in front of their property. Now we have to decide whether that is the best choice. So having it for the span of one block is not going to make sense unless it connects to something else. So that's why I brought the picture. So we understand we have an extra lane there. Keep in mind, Andalusia only has two lanes heading east. We have three lanes heading west here. So we do have some space to work with. Thoughts on that matter?
Those rightaways are approximately similar as far as width. I believe they're both sixty foot rightaways.
They are.
And so we, we can certainly look at that. It's just, it's just a messy area because things are weaving in and out. But we can certainly look at those two and incorporate, and try to look at, and try to incorporate the connectivity to the mobility hub using Anastasia and Valencia. So we can, we can certainly have Dover Coal look at that as far as the analysis of the commission wishes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I want to understand what Dover Coal has to say on it, right? I mean, I don't, I don't want to tell Dover Coal, make this work. You know, I want to say, what's your, what are your thoughts?
Vice Mayor, we're not going to make them, the, the idea is, is to look at this from a planning and traffic engineering perspective. How can it make, can it work and how can we make it work? And, but not really tell them what to do.
Yep. All right.
So that somewhat covers a little bit of G three.
Okay.
Yes, I believe that G two and G three are kind of interrelated.
So do you have any further update on Dover Coal's, you know, recommendations?
We have, we have, we have a meeting this week with the team to make sure that everything is focused in the right direction. And it's a good time for this because we can also discuss the Valencia issue at the same time.
Can you get back to us by the next meeting just to give us an update? It's moving forward because there's a lot of folks very, very interested in this area.
We can definitely update the commission next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to G four.
G four is a resolution of the City Commission approving a license agreement with fifteen oh five Ponce SPE LLC for the operation of a temporary city operated dock park located on the site for the proposed fifteen oh five Ponce Liam project.
Perfect.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Before you use a license agreement for the operation of a temporary dog park at the fifteen oh five Ponce site, I understand that the, the company fifteen oh five Ponce SPE LLC is taking ownership of those parcels. And once they take ownership and properly fence the area, the city will be operating a temporary dog park for approximately a year at that location.
And we'll have, we'll have, we'll have a celebration too.
Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Go ahead, Mike.
I know, please. I'll second.
Commissioner Forrester?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to City Manager items, I one. Mondo, how are you, sir?
And Mayor, this is our Ican polls and we contracted Penifarina to really create a special poll for Coral Gables. There, there are various designs that they've come up with. We need to limit it if possible to two because of the tooling cost. And so this, this poll really provides, it was designed by an aerospace engineer. So it's, it's modular. It now has even five G. So it's got five G. It's got, it can do traffic, pedestrian, environmental, weather, the whole thing. And, and so what we would like to have is, is a, is.
Says it makes coffee. I'm sorry. Yeah, it also makes coffee.
Just, just about it. You can walk your dog too. But.
Just so I'm clear, this is the same smart city poll that we already have in some locations, just a new aesthetic design to it, basically?
We have, we have a trial, trial poll. And, and we, the new polls are being designed, also designed, we designed them for hurricane loading so that they're hurricane resistant. And so I will let our IT director present.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Manna. We have a presentation. Okay. So this is attached to the agendas. I'm going to go really quick over the background. Basically, you know that we presented this as a concept of collaboration between the industrial designer, Penifarina, and also the smart city poll innovator. Basically, this is first design in the entire world of these capabilities. And we had the first prototype in North, in North America. The first one that incorporates all the technologies in one single modular integrated design with no attachments. So it looks like a, a pole with no attachment. And this technology has been piloted at the corner of Alhambra and Ponce. De Leon has been working well, has provided a lot of insight for public safety and connectivity. And without doing any construction, we have replaced the poles three times. So we are running the server version of the prototype because they are learning with us how to improve it. So that tells you also that you all, you invest in construction ones and from then on it's like plug and play. It's totally modular. So we know the smart districts to the left, what we're doing, we're building that capacity, you know, for public wifi, for connectivity, for mobility, for public safety. We, we continue to grow to the north and to the south. Eventually, the goal is to connect to the underline, to connect to the, to the flagler corridor. And we know that's necessary for everything else that we provide. So without that connectivity and that capacity is difficult to provide mobile apps and connectivity for mobility, for vehicle connectivity that is happening now, we know with new technologies. So this is the design to the, to the right. You see how it is modular? And the top tier shows three concept designs that if you see, it's very small to see it, but to the lower right corner is the second design of the pole that is live now, that was completely changed. And, sorry, I, I think that I didn't mention something here. Is that, that's intertwined with the other presentation that I did of the expansion of the fiber. So that was approved in previous commission meeting. We're going to start the construction. So that goes together. So those eight new poles are planned as part of this expansion as well. And it's also related to the presentation I did about that digital twin system that I showed, because all those systems are connected, you know, from the ground, all those sensors are connected and presented in those dashboards that you saw last, in last commission meeting. So that's the project I presented for the expansion, four phases. First phase is Alhambra Circle, Financial Corridor, then Ponce de Leon that connects to University. And then we have the mobility corridor in Andalucia and the Arts and Culture Corridor and Aragon and Merigway expand also public wifi in all those areas and sensors and public safety sensors in all those areas. And this is the latest generation, the next generation of this poll. So when we started, we were famously the first pilot and we had a lot of capacity, but now they're coming with a lot of new modules. So all those different modules that you see there is part of a repertoire of modules that can be, you know, mix and match in different configurations depending on what you need to do on each location. So some of them are for environmental sensors like air quality, weather, noise, et cetera. Others are more towards telecommunications, five, five G, wifi. Other modules are more like for traffic safety and have artificial intelligence to detect speed and other, and other things and count pedestrians and traffic.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Since the signal for most cell phone providers is a little bit weak, is this going to help boost it?
Only if you have a cellular antenna there. So that's in the horizon is to have this becoming like a small cell type of device where you can improve signal. At this time, we are providing wifi, but not.
Providing wifi, but I mean, for, you know, the main providers, are they going to be able to put signal boosters in there?
We have been in touch with them. The thing with the care is that they are very proprietary. When we asked them to collaborate in this project and join and add their own equipment, they are trying to do their own polls on their, on their own. And so, but we are trying to collaborate with them. So they joined this project too and they co-locate in this post.
The idea of, of this project is that the five G issue is, is quite unattractive. I mean, you have a concrete pole with different antennas and you have boxes below and so forth. The idea of here is, is, is to say, yes, you can do five G, but here's how we do it in Coral Gables and, and not have these, these ugly poles block by block. So, so the effort here is, is that five G now can be done. Technology doesn't have to be ugly.
Right.
It can be done, it can, it can be done quite nicely. And, and this is an effort to, to do that. And we hope that, that what we do here goes on to, to other cities because the pilot program that we did and so forth is the first one in, in the United States. So we are, we are moving forward into something that, that, that can be quite unattractive, yet we, we can do it better. And, and this is the idea. This is what, this is how you can do it. And, and it's, it's more expensive, but it's something that, that we can, that And it's, it's more expensive, but it's something that, that we can, that we can expand on. And the fact that, that, that these polls, that these polls have, have the expansion capability means it's really unlimited. It's really, as technology moves on, it's really unlimited as to what you can add to them.
Right. So it's, from what I understand that you're saying, it's limited just to 5G? And it doesn't deal with any service below 5G?
The problem we have is 5G. That is the, the, the fact that, that there's so many, there's so much movement towards 5G. And there's quite a number of polls that are required for 5G. And this resolves that major issue.
No, I, I understand. It's just the question I get from a lot of people is with all the buildings, signal below 5G is not traveling very well anymore in a downtown area. So is it possible for cell phone providers to add a signal booster to these polls?
It is possible. It's part of the design collaboration between the manufacturer and the carriers. We have had those meetings and those conversations.
Okay.
And the carriers are trying to co-locate now in facades and rooftops.
Right.
So there's a lot of things happening now. They need also the height.
Right.
So there's a height factor there. The poll will have to really grow like almost double too.
Right.
But it is possible and we have had those conversations. It is an strategic, also business decision by the manufacturer. They, they also should get into that market because that's going to expand. So, okay, so if we try to do all these capabilities and components like we have been doing it in different collocations, we would be spending like five times the cost of this modular technology. So that's another reason is cost effectiveness. We are consolidating and instead of having multiple sensors and poles and smart lighting and wifi controllers in different places, different installation, different cost, we consolidate, it's modular, and we save money to also for this implementation. So this is attached to the agenda. So I'm going to go really quick over the design methodology that Penifarina followed. They were very thorough. They studied the brand of the city, the history, the heritage. They also looked, they did a city tour of all the landmarks and beautiful places in the city. So there's a lot of things that they could observe and they were amazed. They actually brought people from Italy and they were amazed and very happy to see Mediterranean Renaissance, Italian Renaissance type of elements in Coral Gables. They analyzed the architectural elements. They analyzed the public art and sculptures. I'm going really fast, but it's attached to the agenda.
Yeah, it's good. They did a good job. It was very interesting, actually. I reviewed it last night.
Look at this analysis of the arcways. This was an inspiration for the design.
Yeah.
They look at the integration with all those architectural elements. Apologize for the speed, but I need to go through the concepts. The symmetry of the facades. Actually, I learned about some places in Coral Gables that I didn't even know they existed when I saw this analysis. They look at city furniture and signage. They look at lighting. So they started looking at, okay, what technologies in the city, smart city technology that exists already? They look at the flora, you know, the Garden City movement and all that. It's part of Coral Gables, color palette. They looked at the texture. That's very important. They use this also as an inspiration for the, for the designs. And the interactive technology that we already have, like sensors, poles and smart city kiosks. And this is a good concept, they say. So change your lips, but keep your roots intact. They're trying to honor the, the history of the city in what they do. This is what they call the design DNA. And you see those words that pop up as part of this analysis and this concept. And this is their approach. So they respect the tradition, the history, the aesthetics, the foundational concepts of the city. But they are inspired by those elements. And they dream about innovation, about technology, taking into that inspiration from the architecture of the, of the city. And so I asked them to interview staff in the city. They interviewed from Planning and Son, the Urban Services. They interviewed my staff. And I asked them to interview also the University of Miami Dean of the School of Architecture, Dr. Rodolfo Curie, who is a good friend of our team. And he's a world-renowned expert on integrating architecture and technology in a way that is harmonious. So he, and he provided a lot of insight too. So that was very good, those interviews. They got some good prompts, you know? And so these are six design concepts that they produced. Staff gravitated toward the upper tier. There are some structural issues and technological issues associated with the lower tier in terms of the adequate use of space for the inner technologies and also wind loads and all other things that may also aesthetically, staff gravitated toward the upper tier. And I want to go one by one of these three here. So the first one was inspired by those arcways. And it's very beautiful, this one, that you see.
That's very cool.
Yeah. And so this is an engineering rendering. And the second one was inspired by the twisted character of those columns. It's this one. Also, this is very good also to incorporate more technological elements inside of the pole that upper part will allow us to do a lot of things with telecommunications. That's the engineering rendering here.
Is there a light up in the top of these?
Let me go back, sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah. Looks like, it looks like there was a possible light in the first one. There's a possible light in the second one.
Yes, that is one of the modules that I showed, those different modules that the new technology allows. One of those modules is for lighting too. And the third one is inspired by coral. It's this. So, well, those are the three ones that have some structural and technological issues, but they are beautiful too. This, this one looks a little bit like the 5G poles, if you see this one. That one was inspired by, let me see, inspired by these elements, the three elements. The fourth one is inspired by the overhangs and the, and by the pampers. It's this one. This one has some issues in terms of the shape and the capacity.
You're saying that one would limit what you could able to do in terms of, that would limit what you're able to do in terms of functionality?
Yes, functionality and also that shape at the, at the top. We're trying to have more like, like a smooth shape on the, on the, on the pole. But it looks, it looks good, but...
But aesthetically or functionally is my question?
Both.
Okay.
Both, yeah. But they look, they look better than anything that you can find today. Go and see those posts. And the last one was inspired. But, so it looks, this in particular, I see it more like for an indoors type of application. We are wasting a lot of space on the pole that we could use. Also, that's shape for wind resistance and from a structural standpoint can have an issue.
That's the only one I didn't like, to be honest.
I would agree. That's the only one I did not like.
The orthodontist user, dentist user.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, my God. You have to bring up dentistry, right?
I like the, I like the one that looks like the nose hair trimmer. That's the modern sleek look. I like that.
So, so well, so this is, the, the goal is that now that we started building the fiber expansion, we are planning those eight new polls. The first time that you do custom manufacturing, you have to build tooling. You have to build molds, the computer, numerical control system CNC. You have to do a lot of things for the first time. New technology is allowed for 3D printing, nano fabrication, but it's still, there is, there is a first time cost. However, it's still lower than if you have to install all those poles in different technologies.
The goal here is to reach one design, right?
So we have two, the two designs. We would like two because...
It's because of the tooling and manufacturing costs that you have that initially. And so we'd like to see if we could limit it to two designs if possible.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were limiting it to one or two. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Now from number four, one on, the cost is going to be like $40,000, really like way lower than if you installed all the systems together. So we are seeking for your approval to move forward and start the manufacturing of those first three elements and have two at City Hall, maybe design one that is more kind of like historical looking on City Hall. And one, maybe, maybe Ponce Circle. The reason I say this location is because we already have fiber there. So while the other segments is being built, those green lines are already there. So we can connect those. And it will provide wifi for the Merrick Park, for the events, the tree lighting, public safety cameras, all that stuff.
What this system does, being modular, it just grows with technology. And so instead of having poles, different poles and different things, this, this one pole can, it's so multifunctional. It just, it grows with technology. When we first started, it didn't have 5G. And Ramundo and I discussed and we said, well, it'll probably have 5G soon. It did have 5G. So it did incorporate 5G. So the director and I have, have been really working with this. And we feel there's just the potential for this, since it's modular, it just, it just grows. And different module, different modules can be replaced with newer modules and, and modules can be added. So it just gives a tremendous amount of growth to, to the area. And it's a way of doing 5G, it's a way of doing technology that, that we can have aesthetics, we can have technology incorporated together. And this is, this is, this attempt to show the communications companies that you can do both. Both can happen.
So when you say it grows, does it grow in height as you add more modules to it?
It could grow in height, but it can also grow in replacement of modules, in more sophisticated modules. So, so yes, you can add more, but as the module, as the modules become more, more sophisticated and it does have the microtechnology, that replacing a module with more functionality is, is, is really where this is probably going.
So if we have one design versus two designs, does it bring down the cost?
I, I think we can work, I think we can work effectively with two because I think one is, there, I think two probably works a little better. We can, we can look at those, those particular areas, work with our board of architects, look at the historical issues and hopefully incorporate those two throughout the city. Similar to what we've done, I think, in, in Streetscape where we have really designs that are Streetscape specific. I think we, I think two is, is probably, is probably a good, a good, a good middle ground.
Right? Are you just looking for approval to proceed or are you looking for guidance? Or you're like, what is it?
We wanted to show all six to the commission and see which ones that you all thought were appropriate.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, to your point, like, for example, I thought the fifth one was nice. But if you tell me that it has limitations, then I would nix it. You know what I mean?
Do you want us to input on the particular? Because we have the pumpkins, we voted on those.
I think that we can overcome.
We can, yeah.
I think if you pick what you like, I think we can overcome it.
Can we see them and perhaps just comment?
Put the final runners up, up.
Yeah. And we'll just give you suggestions.
And if you're looking for approval to move forward, I would have a vote.
You put the six up, please. Director, thank you.
Just the last two.
The one with the six.
I have them all together.
Yeah, the one with the six pictures.
The six, yeah. Sorry, let me go real quick here.
Oh, that's...
So the last two that you had up were one and two or one and three?
Yes, that one and two were the ones so far that staff kind of like favored. And also three is very good too. The issue with the lower tier, they're beautiful, but they have functional and capacity and technological issues.
Let me just be a little higher.
So we're looking at the, basically one, two and three and maybe pick from the list. Everybody has.
I think the consensus was not six, right? So it's one through five?
One through five, okay.
I'm not a big fan of four.
Me neither.
So I don't know how my colleagues feel.
On the same page, all right.
I like, I like sort of five because it sort of reminds me of the streetlights that we have, the traditional historic streetlights, the conceptual design. But...
It's not useful, that's all.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So scrap five for me.
But I think we can make it work. If we, if we like the design a lot, I think we can make it work. We can make any of those five work, really.
But aerodynamically, you're saying that number five is not as...
Yeah, creates other issues.
Hurricane design whatever you wish.
I like five. Yeah. Listen, to me, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with two or five.
I also like two, I like two or five as well.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
I liked one, I did like one as well because I thought the arching was good.
I thought one was good as well. I thought you, you had it narrowed down to two as to being the most functional. I mean, I like, I like the design on five, but if it's not as...
So if we zero in on one, two and five, that does, does that help you?
Well, I, I think we need, we probably choose them if, if possible because of the tooling cost.
Are we good with two and five? Are you fine with that, Commissioner Anderson? Would you like to switch one out?
Assuming you're able to overcome the, whatever concerns you have about the technical capabilities on five.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing that concerns me with number five.
At which point I would revert to probably one.
Yes, exactly. I was going to say the same thing.
I would like if there would be the opportunity to...
So we have two and five and one as an alternate?
Yes.
Is that right?
If five presents an issue, we come back to with one.
Functionality, obviously.
Functionality.
Functionality, yeah. I like, I like one because when you looked at it close up, it had the nice aspect to it.
Okay. So I guess we have two and five and one is the alternate.
Can we get a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you, Ramundo, as always. It's always a pleasure. Item I2.
I2 is a resolution city commission authorizing the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $261,617 allocated to the Coral Gables Police Department as part of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program Initiative, authorizing execution of a grant contract and authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget to recognize the grant revenue and to appropriate such funds to put toward the program.
This is a pass-through grant. We take the money from the federal government and then we administer it for part of our partnership with the HIDA group down here as well, so.
I'm good. I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Chief.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to I3. Thank you, Chief.
I3 is a resolution city commission authorizing the acceptance of a $392,361 three-year traffic technology grant as well as the execution of the respective grant contract and authorizing an amendment to fiscal budget 2022-23 annual budget to recognize the one-year amount as revenue and to appropriate such funds to put toward the cost of the program.
So this is the project that I presented before that we are doing with the Department of Energy to do research for three years to develop intelligent signals that can communicate with connected vehicles and with the supercomputer at the Department of Energy to see ways how we can optimize traffic in real time using, you know, artificial intelligence and all those technologies. So we are going to get a portion of the grant, the grant's like five million almost. The majority goes to the lab, to the National Lab, the Pacific Northwest National Lab, to the scientists that are developing the other technology and to the industry that is participating, Siemens that is working with the county.
Is there any matching or out of pocket here?
Our matching is our talent in terms of we have smart city technologies and the infrastructure that we already have. That's the reason why they selected us.
For hard money costs?
No, it's not hard money.
This is, this is, this is a department, a DOE grant, very, very actually prestigious grant. And it's done because I think our city is so high-end as far as smart city technology. So what we would put in is our efforts.
Right, right. Okay, great.
Yeah, the fact that we already have the infrastructure is $1.2 million is the value, the monetization of that infrastructure.
Of course.
That's a big match.
IT is doing a fantastic job. This is a very prestigious grant.
Great. Congratulations.
Incredible job as always. Congratulations.
I'll move it.
Great work.
Second. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Forz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Okay, before we move on, I know we have a time certain at 11 o'clock. Would you like to, would you like to, are you ready to go forward now?
Three minute, like restroom break?
Should we, we'll wait till 11. We'll take a restroom break and then we'll come back and finish off the meeting, okay?
For the last item?
For the last item?
For the last item, then come. Hallelujah. And we're back. We have a time certain for 11:00 AM, agenda item F nine. Again, I will be recusing myself as a result of the client being, being a tenant of mine in one of the properties that I own in downtown Coral Gables. Thank you.
I'll be in to record resolution S nine, the resolution of the City Commission approving receipt of TDRs pursuant to zoning code article 14, process section 14 to 04.6, review and on the property legally described as lots 1 through 6, lots 17 through 22, block 36, Douglas section Coral Gables, Florida, including conditions providing for your previous severability clause and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item and it is quasi judicial, so anybody who's going to testify should be sworn in.
Those who will be appearing before the session, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimonial provided today will be the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the commission. Mario Garcia Sarah with offices at 600 Brickell Avenue here today representing Location Acquisitions LLC, the contract purchaser of the property at 1505 Ponce de Leon Boulevard. I'm joined today by Mr. Hamed Rodriguez, our project architect, and as well as Mr. Leonard Roberts from Location Acquisitions. You'll remember the city commission previously approved this project back in July. It was approved on the condition that within six months we return with the TDRs that we need under contract and the approval of the assignment of the TDRs to this property. And that's what we're here discussing today, the TDR receiver site approval for 1505 ponds. As you remember, there's a lot to like about this project. It is less than half of the maximum permitted density, 80 units versus 179 units. Almost a third of the project site is open space. There's going to be two public parks as part of this project, one fronting ponds on the west side of the property and another park on the east side of the property, which will serve as a puffer to the neighboring building and a neighborhood amenity. It's going to be the site of ultimately a permanent dog park. And as you were discussing earlier today on your agenda, a temporary dog park in the meantime, as we're going through the permitting process. We're also preserving and adaptive reusing a historic building, which is part of the project site and is located at 122 Menores. And as a part of this TDR transaction, there's even going to be more to like about this project. The TDRs that we are acquiring are going to result in a new city park at 301 Mallorca, which is about 6,000 square feet in size. It is also going to provide much help for the sending sites of the TDRs, the other three, which are historic properties at 235 Mallorca, 36 Phoenician, 118 Menores, which was a result of this, would be able to afford the maintenance and preservation that it takes for historic buildings. So with that said, we do have the project available to show if you'd like to see it. But remember, you already did see this project and previously approved it. But if you for any reason want to see it again, we can, and of course, we're here available for questions. Thank you.
Jennifer Garcia, city planner, check out the PowerPoint, please. All right. So as you remember, you approved this project back in July 2015. Sorry, 2005, sorry, 2022, this year, July 25th. And part of this project, you did approve a condition to require them to come back in the next six months. And so here we are approving that TDRs. So they're receiving these TDRs from three historic local landmarks as well as a future public park on 301 Mallorca. The project is in the same location as you remember. It's fronting ponds in between Menores and Mendoza. And it's zoned appropriately for mixed use to receive those TDRs. Now, this is a rendering of the context of what that would look like within the existing conditions with larger buildings on ponds and MF2 in the back. So the property has been posted, identified appropriately according to the zoning code and letters been sent out to within 1,500 feet. And it's after the man's approval based on the compliance of the zoning code as well as the goals, objectives and policy of the comp plan. That's it.
So I have one question because it's probably the most asked question I get.
Okay.
When is a dog park going to be possibly open?
It's a question for Mario.
You know what, let's finish F9 on the TDR portion and then we'll have a discussion about G4.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Any comments from the commission?
None.
All right, take a motion on F9.
I'll move it.
Commissioner Fores?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manah.
And then I'd like to ask one of my colleagues if they would move to reconsider G4 and open it back up. I don't know about it's a question just because of the mayor's refusal. I'll take a, I'll take a reword on it. I don't think there's any financial tie in there, but just as a precaution.
I'll move it.
Mr. Clerk, can I reopen my motion to reconsider G4?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So then I'll open up discussion for G4 again. I'll let the applicant give us an update and answer Commissioner Anderson's question.
So with regards to the dog park, the temporary one that at least will be in place during the time of permitting of the 1505 ponds project, we're expecting to have that completed by the end of the calendar year and ready for use.
Okay, that's excellent news.
There you go.
If we could have a motion again with the mayor recused?
I'll move it.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fores?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manah.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. So it seems like we're done with the agenda, correct?
Anything else left? I believe so.
It's the first time before noon.
So we are going to do a few housekeeping issues. Number one, can we have the results for the pumpkin carving festivities?
Good morning once again. So thank you to all of the departments and divisions that participated this year. I always say that every year they get bigger and bigger, the constructions. But the winner of this year, which is the seventh annual great employee pumpkin contest, is pumpkin number three, City Attorney's Office.
Congratulations.
It's all Gus. It's all Gus. We can take no credit.
You want to put the theme music on? Let's at least get, see, let's see, let's see the pumpkin in its full glory.
In its full glory.
While Gus gets the music going, thank you to the Adult Activities Center, Venetian Pool and Economic Development, who also participated.
It's the mayor's playlist you have. You got it right there.
Thank you.
Can we, before you leave, can we talk about two quick items, which are going to be items that I was going to discuss in the mayor's comments?
I have lots of focus completely right now.
First off, I want to congratulate you along with our Public Works team, Solange, our solid waste department, Matt Anderson. Am I forgetting anybody else in regards to the success this weekend? We had over, we collected over 375,000 pounds of hazardous waste this weekend.
So yeah, we had, we had 425 cars pass through the event in the three hours. I know Commissioner Anderson passed through, Commissioner Fores joined us at the event. It, that's like our average turnout right now. I just started getting the numbers back in. We collected over 10,000 pounds of electronic waste. I'm still waiting for the household hazardous waste, but by the time I get those numbers back, over the last seven years, we've collected and diverted out of the landfill over 400,000 pounds of hazardous waste, electronic waste, clothing. We also did donations, mayor, that you were leading up for Hurricane Ian. So our fire department was out there collecting on behalf of that effort. Our partners at Camilla's House, where the clothing gets donated to them. And obviously our e-waste, household hazardous waste and paper shredding. So it continues to be a staple in this community as far as the events. The feedback that we receive from the attendees has been amazing. They're always looking forward to the next event. We received a lot of compliments and the next event will be taking, taking place Earth Day 2023, which is April 22nd, 2023, in the City Hall parking lot.
I know that Camilla's House, we got their weights back also. They collected around 2,400 pounds of clothing, including several suits, which they said that they were in need of. So they were very grateful for that. Thank you to our fire cadets that were out there helping with the collection of the donations for Hurricane Ian relief. And they were helping out Camilla's House too. And Kelly and everyone else from police that was out there helping us direct traffic and for sponsoring the shredding, the paper shredding.
I also wanted to mention too, the growing place, the school next door. They actually did a collection last week and their elementary school collected all the clothes that were donated from the elementary school. And Marlon Ebert, the chair of the sustainability board, and I went over on Friday, spoke with the students, which was amazing, and received all that clothing that they donated and it was given to Camilla's House. So thank you again for their support as well.
Good, great work as always, and the event continues to grow. Like you said, it's a staple of this community and a lot of other communities have called me, a lot of mayors have said, listen, you guys are the envy of all other cities in regards to this effort that you're leading. So thank you to both of you and to our solid waste department and our public works department. Did I forget anybody else?
Police, yeah, police provide support for traffic. We, we end up causing a traffic.
We had economic development out there.
Elkes was out there.
Want to make sure that, I just want to make sure we say thank you to everybody because again, to go out there on a Saturday and give up your own time is a team effort. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. Thank you all for your support.
Another discussion, talk to me a little bit about what's happening in downtown in regards to the next cleanup effort.
Yes. So we have our next downtown community cleanup has been scheduled for Monday, November 7th at 5 o'clock. We will once again be meeting at the Chamber of Commerce office over at Alhambra. Registration is live up on our website and our community calendar as well. And we will be starting to promote it on e-news and social media these two coming weeks leading up to the event.
So let's work together in my office so we can give some sort of cash prize again.
Thank you, mayor.
And to incentivize people to really join us.
Thank you so much.
We'll figure out exactly what we give, but we'll have some money available.
Perfect.
My, a personal donation before people start talking about, hey, there's, we don't give money out. We don't have that type of budget here in the city, so we give personal donations. All my colleagues do for a line of different charities. So we'll do something nice, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you to both of you. Great work. I want to mention a few quick items. I have a town hall meeting that I welcome all my colleagues and any employees who would like to attend to please, to please join us November 2nd at 6:00 PM. We're going to have Senator Eliana Garcia, who did an incredible job this year in regards to appropriations. She'll be joining us there and talking about state issues. We're also having a solid waste sunshine meeting October 27th between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. Staff has been working very hard on a presentation that's going to really detail the current state of our solid waste department, options, opportunities, new technology. It's more of an educational experience, anything, and having an open dialogue amongst the commission to see how we can continue to offer better services and be more sustainable and be really the city beautiful moving forward. Besides that, I spoke to the manager and our staff yesterday. I've called, I've called for our sunshine meeting to discuss executive benefits and the conversation that we've been having for some time and salaries. The city manager told us that we will be proceeding forward with a meeting on November 10th. That's what we're trying to schedule.
After the?
After, after our next commission meeting.
Executive session.
Okay. So are we having it on the 9th or on the 10th?
We're scheduling now, mayor.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we can get a date by the next 24 hours so we can start properly notifying any interested parties who wanted to attend that meeting to be present.
Would that be a 5:00 PM meeting?
Yes, it would be a 5:00 PM. We called for a 5:00 PM meeting. Along with the solid waste discussion is a, is a 5:00 PM meeting. All these meetings that are important in nature are 5:00 PM meetings. I have two, two remaining items. I'd like to see if I can get a picture up for the first item.
Can I ask a quick question on the last item before you, sorry? Is there any reason that we can't just each be brought up to speed on whatever it is staff wants to communicate to us? My general understanding is that this was done pursuant to a compensation plan that was approved by this commission pursuant to the prior city manager's instructions and request. And then if one of us has an actual question or concern about something in there, bring it to the commission at a commission meeting. Is there, like what is? Like I appreciate the idea of a sunshine meeting and I'm happy to do, have a discussion in the open at a commission meeting. I guess my question is, what are we looking to do at the sunshine meeting?
Well, I think, I think there's a lot of questions and then again, there's a lot of misinformation, something that's been brought up.
Which should be addressed.
Just brought up by a resident before. There's a continued effort to mislead. And you have some certain residents in this community that have a lot of questions. And I want to make sure, like you always do, that we be as transparent as possible and have this conversation in the open air. So there is, if there's any issues or there's any questions, we can do it. The county uses a different, a little bit of a different format that we don't. We, the information is accessible, readily accessible through the budget. But the county, for example, has all salaries and all compensation and all information of employee salaries online on a website. You can literally see it. You can click and you can see it. The purpose of the meeting to me was, you know, there's a snowball effect and it happens here very, very quickly based on what one or two individuals say and before you know it. I just got one right now, you know, literally a text message that I can show you from a resident saying, you know, pleading and begging to stop, to stop the, the discussion on solid waste and garbage pits. No, no, I can't, I can't remove my solid, I can't remove my trash pit. I said, where did you get the impression that I was going to remove your, your pit? Where did you get that impression? You know, we're going to have a conversation about how the city can be better and more beautiful and how we can do things incentivizing people to move in a different direction. So there's already, there's an effort to, to, to curtail these discussions by, by having misinformation and by misleading people. So my point is that we have it in the public record, we have a discussion and we move forward based on that discussion. I want the commission would like to do. And we can take, and we can also take some sort of action or give the manager direction as a team.
I, I think it's important to have a transparent discussion because it does avoid the rumor mill that can get rolling. And that, you know, if we want to be transparent, we need to be able to do this in the sunshine.
By the way, I mean.
Commission meetings are in the sunshine as well. Hi, everybody. You know, it's, so I'm just saying, A, we gave instruction as a commission when we approved the compensation plan. Let's start there. The increases that have been discussed were, as far as I know, and if somebody has different information, we can discuss it at the meeting consistent with the approved plan approved by this commission in the sunshine. It's also in the budget approved by this commission. So the idea that this was done not in the sunshine, A is not true. B, I'm happy to have all the transparency in the world. Let's talk about it. And my only question was, we can be informed by staff. And then if one of, if, if somebody wants to come out and say that they have a problem with one of the decisions, then they should ask for some sort of change. I'm just, you know, if we're being honest, I think that the sunshine meeting has the potential to turn into a bit of a spectacle. And, you know, I'm not really clear on if we need an entire sunshine meeting dedicated to a decision that's consistent with a compensation plan that this commission approved. I'm, I'm happy to put all the information in the sunshine and talk about it, but if you need, you know, if you want to do the sunshine meeting, I'll be there. But I'm just asking if it's absolutely necessary, if it can be part of a commission item.
Well, I think, listen, it can be part of the commission item without a problem.
In the sunshine.
I don't have a problem, but the issue is, it already is a spectacle.
Right.
Because you have, you have entities and you have individuals in this community sending text messages to tens of thousands of people trying to intimidate and impose their will. So this commission moves in a direction, which in my opinion, I don't see this commission moving in that direction. You see a line of other, of other things that are happening, things that are being said that are incorrect. Because I've talked to several employees to ask them in regards to, did they receive the magnitude of the benefits that are being discussed, and those are not the case. And also again, we have to be very careful when people are trying to manipulate the discussion for their own personal benefit. And we have, the best way to curtail that type of behaviors to have the conversation in, 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 in the sunshine. That's, that's why I move in that direction because I don't know how, any other way to address it because it's the constant barrage of misinformation which has put us in a position where we have to address it.
And mayor, mayor, if I may say, we were planning on having a meeting with all of you individually before that sunshine meeting and before the next commission meeting to, to properly show you where we are as far as compensation. However, one has to be living in a vacuum not to realize that there has been an issue as far as hiring. It's nationwide. Finding people is extremely difficult. I have been almost 15 months trying to find a project manager and I can't do it for.
I'm in the same, I'm in the same world.
Vertical. So, so, so some of these things, I don't know why they come up because, because you have to be living in an actual vacuum not to realize that this is something nationwide. It's not something that's just inherently, inherently a problem with Coral Gables. And so we intend to have an individual meeting with, with all of you to explain this whole situation. And we would, and I would like to do it before our executive session at the end of the November 9th.
And just for the sake of clarity and not to mince words, the reason it's been brought up now is because the fire union is in the middle of a negotiation with us relating to their collective bargaining agreement. And this is a tactic that's being deployed to apply pressure to that negotiation. That's the reality of it. Anybody that wants to? That's the reality of it. Um, anybody that wants to deny that, uh, I think is not being honest about what's going on. Uh, when entities go out of their way to publish the information, when they have uh, uh, coordinated animation uh, on social media relating to the story uh, within days, uh, it's pretty obvious that uh, what's going on here. Uh, so if we want to have a sunshine meeting and if our friend, Mr. McAllister, wants to come again from the county and hurl insults at the mayor and at this commission about public safety and make another spectacle out of that, um, let's do it. But you know, I think at some point you do it to the detriment of your own staff. And I think at some point you have to be honest about the impact it has on morale in the city. Um, and I think uh, we just have to be careful about continuing to add fuel uh, to the fire instead of you know, just moving forward and doing what we need to do uh, on the votes that we'll be taking and the decisions we'll be making vis a vis those negotiations, which I'm confident we will do.
I I can I add something? You know, I think I think the fire union, there's no doubt about it, uh, that they believe that this conversation regarding the executive packages is relevant to their ongoing and lengthy negotiations with respect to the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, the only thing that, you know, I I I disagree with is that they were, they're certainly, they're certainly relevant to them. But if I remember correctly, you know, the first person to discuss the compensation increases that were, that came out on the budget was Maria Cruz uh, during public comment thereafter, a blog wrote about it. Uh, and then without a doubt, the the fire union has has uh, has brought that into their negotiation and their leverage. Uh, whether that's something that they feels good for the strategy or not, that's up to them to make those decisions. Uh, but but it was the resident Maria Cruz who first brought it up. Um, separate apart from that, just so I'm clear, when you say executive session, we're talking about the shade session, right?
Shade session for the uh, for the fire contract.
And that's gonna be the day of
The ninth.
The ninth of the meeting. And after, after the commission meeting.
We're trying to do the sunshine meeting before or after that?
After that.
After that. Okay.
Because I would, we would like to explain to, I would like to meet with all of you individually, have the shade session, and we can have the sunshine meeting after that. We I need to meet with all of you individually and that gives me time to do so.
Yeah. So I want to put also something on the record and then we'll step on to to the issue and excuse me then, Commissioner Menendez has a few comments. Again, um, I've spoken to many, many firefighters and I want to speak on behalf of the commission. If my colleagues have a different opinion, you know, please feel free. We are incredibly proud, incredibly proud to have you working for the city. We're blessed to have you working for the city. You are an integral part of this community. And many have come and talked to me about their concerns in regards to the approach by Mr. David Paris and the unions. This is not an issue against the firefighters. We are in the process of negotiations. Mr. David Paris took it upon himself um, to politicize these negotiations by sending tens of thousands of text messages, spreading false rumors, being in concert with a blog that also has spread fa- false rumors, uh, false information, excuse me. But I want people to understand that this commission stands proudly with the men and women of the fire department. We appreciate your efforts, your leadership. Every single time that you go to someone's home or their business and you assist, we are beyond grateful. And I have listened to many of you. I got stopped yesterday evening when I was leaving from a meeting in downtown by one of the firefighters who came up to me to talk to me about the issue and was very adamant on how disappointed they are with Mr. Paris and the route that he has decided to take. I want to be clear with you in the most respectful way. We will not be intimidated. We will do what's in the best interest of the city and keep our promises to the police and firefighters. And to echo the sentiment to the vice mayor with Mr. Billy McAllister, there is no room for that type of discourse here in the city. It is disrespectful to our employees and it demoralizes our employees. For him to come here and emasculate our fire department the way that he did was shameful. Now I will not stand for it. So moving forward, I look forward to having these conversations in the sunshine. I think they're critically important to really putting this to rest. This is a very difficult job market, very difficult job market, but we must always remember just like I remember every day as the mayor, what a privilege it is to work and serve in this community. It is a true privilege to work and serve in this community. So, um, Mr. Man, Commissioner Menendez, excuse me.
I agree with everything you just said.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my thoughts, um, I honestly believe that solutions can, solutions have, and solutions will be found here on the dais among the members of the commission with the support of the administration, with the input of the community. Solutions, final determinations, final solutions, action taken is not going to be handled outside these, the city hall. It'll be here. It'll involve everyone though. As the manager said, it doesn't have to be Coral Gables. Just pick up the newspaper, private industry corp, major corporations are having a difficult time keeping employees. It's a competitive environment between one business and another business to draw uh, workers and draw employees. Coral Gables is not different than any other organization or entity in that situation. So I personally, as a resident, as a as a person, if I see that employees have the opportunity to have their salary go up some, get better benefits, I'm I'm supportive of them. I would like to see more benefits spread out and I want, make sure everybody's well taken care of going forward. However, I think what was alluded to a little while ago, and and I'm not going to point fingers at any one group or any one individual. We are entering into an interest, interesting cycle that happens sometimes every two years in Coral Gables and sometimes happens every four years in Coral Gables. All you have to do is go back two and a half years when we were talking about Miracle Mile and the rezoning. And those meetings were so unlike the tradition of Coral Gables. People lost their cool and I don't want the city, the commission, or residents to be drawn into a food fight. Because that's what some people would like us to go into, a food fight. Because some people, small minority, do their best work in a food fight environment and that's not Coral Gables. So I think there's a solution with regards to the salaries and the increases in the benefits going forward, something as simple as any time that there is going to be a large scale increase in benefits of salary. There should be perhaps a separate memo that is circulated to the commission so that it sort of stands out and if there are any questions can be addressed, something as simple as that. However, the structure of the sunshine meeting, we have to manage it well. We have to put parameters there because our community has been coming together and I really don't want the next few months for our community be torn apart because there's some people here, and I'm not talking about in this building, that would like nothing better than to have chaos and a food fight happen. Because it's not good for our community, it's not good for our residents, it's not good for our city. So I think we have to be smart moving forward.
I have a couple of things to add. Um, first, I I think one mistake that that's made up here frequently is is sort of taking a big issue and sometimes a controversial issue and trying to personify it by finding, you know, boogeymen or boogie women uh, to point their finger at. You know, I think what we're discussing here is is a larger issue of a collective bargaining negotiation that's been going on for a while. Uh, and I think it's counterproductive to to sort of try to create or find or point to villains in that process and name people by name, especially when they're not here. Secondly, you know, we can, we can tell stories about having run into firefighters and the firefighter saying that they don't like what approach is being taken and that suggesting that that firefighter you ran into is happy with it, but let's not forget and we can't deny, we're gonna deal with the facts here that the fire union, I'm talking about the fire union because it's their collective bargaining negotiation that's pending, has 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 been presented with the city's last offer and a majority of them rejected it. So I don't think this is a situation where somebody is going rogue and the majority of the union doesn't agree with them. I mean, they voted on this and they rejected it and that's part of the negotiation process. I'm sure there'll be more discussions. Uh, but there's a vote has been taken on this and 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 the majority of firefighters have rejected it. Uh, third, uh, I've been the recipient of a lot of those text messages too. Um, I don't say I agree with that, with that strategy and 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 uh, and tactic. Uh, it is a a way of disseminating, disseminating information, but I I also don't think you can put that all on the fire union if you can at all. You know, first, we don't know for sure it was the fire union, but even if it was, some of those texts have dealt with complaints by the police union regarding their current compensation. Uh, and by the motor pool regarding their compensation. So, you know, if we're gonna talk about text messages being sent, we can't assign all that to the fire union. We have several departments and several trades in the city uh, who are leveraging these, who are levying these complaints at this time. With that being said, I have nothing further to say.
I have a few comments.
May I, may I respond? Again, we can act like nothing is happening, but we all received text messages in this community and they were all meant to sway and intimidate and push the commission to provide further incentives and a better offer than what we offered to the firefighters. It's simple. No one on this commission is gonna be intimidated. Nobody's going to better an offer based on a few thousand text messages that are sent. Because not one resident called me. I don't know if you received any residents' calls that said, hey, Vince, you better do something because they're gonna keep sending those text messages. And yes, Commissioner Force, it was the firefighters. We all know it was the firefighters, both locally and at the county, in concert to effectuate change on two issues. Number one, annexation, and number two, the issue of the contract. You bring up the police officers. The police officers were provided a contract which they accepted. And it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, Raquel is here, they're still, they're still currently valid, correct?
Yes, this year.
For another
For this year.
For this year. So they're not out of contract and it's my understanding that the moment that we finalize our negotiations with the firefighters, we will be moving briskly immediately to start negotiations with the police officers.
That's correct, Mayor.
I don't want to get into too many details, but everybody here on this commission knows that we made an offer to the police officers and we were in lockstep in offering the firefighters the same offer. And that has changed. So without getting into too many discussions that were mentioned in the shade, in the shade meeting out of respect for the negotiations, I do not want to move in a direction that certain people have in this community where they start using those tactics, intimidation and pushing and rumors and false information in an attempt to somehow, some way sway us to say, okay, forget about it, throw the towel in and just give them what they want. That's not the way things work in the real world. They don't. And to say that it was mo- the motor pool, I know it wasn't the motor pool. Because the motor pool doesn't work that way. And I know that none of the other employees will conduct themselves here. To say that it was police is an insult also. So again, moving forward, we have an offer on the table. We have a shade meeting uh, which will happen on the ninth. I'm looking forward to that meeting. And putting this behind us, taking a necessary action, moving forward, and the moment that we resolve the pension discussions, excuse me, the the discussions and negotiations with the firefighters, we will move on to the police immediately. And we've been very clear that that is our stance and police is well aware of that because they understand it and they want to move expeditiously also. So again, the intent of my conversation here was not to even bring this up. We're moving on. We're moving on from it. We're going to address it on the ninth. I just hope that we're all ready to really negotiate and play ball and get through this and not politicize this process anymore. This should be handled the way business terms are handled, sitting down in a room and having a conversation.
Mayor.
I I have to say something because I've been, I've been, just in case, I don't, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You know, you you do this all the time.
But give me a second.
Can we have, can I have Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Anderson, go ahead, please.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd like to dovetail a couple of comments. Um, there were, I'm offering Commissioner Menendez as well. I like to make decisions not in a vacuum, but in being able to have better information. I've had employees privately before, you always research what's out there in the industry. What is your competition to be able to get positions filled? And we need to be able to have that type of information for the entire employee base in order to be, make intelligent decisions. We do it for our capital improvement projects. We weigh, you know, which to prioritize, which ones we need to move forward first. We don't always agree with staff on that. We've pushed the fire station ahead uh, from the um, the recommendation that the the staff had made because we know that's a life safety issue. So I'm looking forward to the sunshine meeting. The memo idea that Commissioner Menendez had is I think is exactly some of the process so that we, we are better informed. And I think the public would be better informed instead of hearing information out of context that distorts what the real picture is. So if they understand what the competition is out there in other industries and what the wages are out there in other other industries that are competing with us, then what seems to be unreasonable in a vacuum is ultimately reasonable. So I'm looking forward to the sunshine meeting and let's have a robust discussion.
Just to be clear, we've not have done anything that has not been approved by this commission.
I I understand. Just just more detail, the memo, the comparisons, the research that you're aware of and making uh, some of the recommendations that have been made.
So moving on, Mr. Clerk, can we have, can we have my my photo up, please?
I have one more comment to make.
You can make them during your time when you have, after, after I'm done with my comments. This is, this is a simple sculpture, beautiful in nature. It's sitting in front of hillstones for the past five, six, seven years. We talk about ADA as an issue here in the community and we talk about, you know, beautifying our streets. If you look around you, you have a bench, you have two garbage cans, you have a traffic box and you also have a sculpture. I'm currently working with my team, Public Works and the county to see what we can do about those traffic boxes. I think technology has advanced significantly where we could potentially even make them smaller. We contacted F P N L, that's not F P N L, that is traffic light management, my understanding. And uh, Mr. Cueto is helping us in the county and we're gonna be hopefully addressing that issue with the A C M and the city manager and our public works team to see we can find some sort of solution for that. At a minimum, at least reduce them in size and tuck them away somewhere where they're not in the middle there. What I'm asking for my support from my colleagues in the commission is I would like to open up and move that sculpture to maybe a park or move it somewhere if it's possible. Come in, Solange, come in. Please, we always welcome input.
Um, so Solange City Manager's Office and Belkies is here with me as well. So these, this one and the others along Miracle Mile are privately owned. Um, we had allowed them as a city to stay out there after the Venetian Pole um, e- exhibit. We've already through economic development and uh, historic communicated with the owners and we're working with them so that they because they are aware that they need to now be moved. So that's already in in the process because they are privately owned.
So what I would like to do is I think it would be, you know, I think there would be a hindrance to moving them because of the weight and the significance. They gotta rent a truck. Could we facilitate maybe moving them with our forces? Because I've been, it's not, this is not staff. This is just, we've been getting to the bottom of the ownership and all the, all the process in place. I would love to see those moved to kind of open that walkway up and give it a little bit more breathing room and if we, it could really accentuate the beauty of 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 the corridor.
Mayor, so um, I believe the letters will be going out. We have identified all the the owners already. It's not as difficult as it seems because the pole does uh, detach from the concrete base. So when they take it, they will only be taking the uh, pole and then a, yeah, the base is ours and will be taken to Seventy Second. However,
The base is ours?
Yes. This concrete base is ours. It was made for to keep it out on the street. Um, so what we could do is we could find a solution where we can remove them all now, put them in a certain location, have the, have the business or the owner pick it up from a certain location.
So that's what I would like to do. That's what I would like to do, especially getting into the holiday season. Let's, 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 you know, this is part of the plan of cleaning the streets, the facades, the beautification of 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 the wa- of the walls that are in construction. I really think that there's positive benefits to this. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it. But I'd like to see if maybe we could do it and maybe But, I'd like to see if maybe we could do it and maybe store it in Seventy Second Avenue. They can come and pick it up there and they can be notified. Does anybody have any concerns with that?
If the owner allows us to do that, we have no issue doing it.
Do you have, do you need a resolution to move this forward?
I think we just need to, we need to reach out to the owners and get their okay to move them.
It's on our public right of way, right?
It's on our public right of way, so.
It's on our public, it's on our public right of way. So, we could, we'd like to work with the owners also, but it is on our public right of way, so we can move them whenever we wish.
So, can I, I'm going to pass the mic. I'm going to make a motion to have those removed and placed in Seventy Second Avenue and have the owners notified that they can come pick up their Venetian poles there.
When those were put in our right of way, what was the agreement with those owners?
That we would allow them to keep them there.
I think we need to look at that.
But the usual, like when we have an encroachment agreement, we say we can remove it at any time. Did it have that language?
I am not sure what the, that was done five or six, I don't know.
Assuming that's the case, I think, you know, if there's a problem, come back and tell us, but.
So, it's conditional.
Well, that's, we just want to make sure because I don't want to be moving private property.
Oh, then we move forward.
If there is no encroachment agreement, if there is no encroachment agreement, then we can move forward to store them at Seventy Second Avenue and they can do with them as the owners wish at that point.
So, if there is an encroachment agreement, they're there forever?
No, it depends. So, most encroachment agreements say that the city can move them at any time. So, that's a question, what's the language in the agreement?
So, what I would like to do is while you're researching that, I don't want to wait another month. So, I made a motion, if there is no issues and we can move them, we can move it forward. Okay? Mr. Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, great work, Belkies, great work, Solange, thank you so much. I have one more item that I'd like to put up, photo. All right, so, these are multiple photos. So, this is on Laguna, right in front of Artigiano. These are sidewalks that I've been working with Dina and our Public Works Department. So, this is a tree that was probably cut down five years ago, was never replaced. After five years, it's growing back. See the little leaves there? I think if you wait maybe fifty years, the tree will be back.
It's an acorn.
I'm being facetious. My point is that this has been like this for a long time. And that whole street has been completely and utterly abandoned and not been maintained. Next photo. The sidewalks are dirty, cracked, broken. This is in Merrick Park, by the way. Next side, next photo. You see the growth? The next photo. The grates that go around are either missing, they've been stolen. And if you look closely, I know it's a stubbing hazard because I stubbed my toe on the grate. My concern is that somebody will get hurt, fall and potentially really injure themselves. Next photo. Same issue. Next photo. You'll see my bigger concern.
Right.
This is happening throughout. These are grates that are elevated, two and three inches off the ground. They're a major tripping hazard. I've had residents come and talk to me and say, listen, I tripped, I tripped on this grate, what can we do? You know?
I don't think they're needed.
And this is another one. So, all in down, all the way to Neiman Marcus, it literally is an issue. The grates are overgrown, the sidewalks are cracked, and at least we should trim, trim those saplings. You call it saplings, right, Dina? What is that, the overgrowth? Thank you.
Dina Bell, Green Space Management. Yeah, these are some oaks that were there probably pre-Merrick Park. We've done site walkthrough and identify they're really overgrowing their locations. They've popped up curbs, they've popped up tree grates. So, I think it's time we have to have a project to fix the whole infrastructure of the street.
I think that we have a development that's coming supposedly across, literally adjacent to this property, on the building that abuts Artigiano and it faces Neiman Marcus. So, they're probably going to have to fix all those curbs. But I would at least like to trim the trees while we wait for that and maybe remove some of those grates so that, and sand down so that that metal isn't like a potential tripping hazard. While we wait for that development to come into place, which is going to have to replace all those sidewalks anyways because it's a pretty significant development, by my understanding.
We'll double check this specific development, maybe we can save the area up. Unfortunately, we were talking about this specific area and ultimately, in order to fix those sidewalks, we believe that those trees have to go.
Well, can't you just, just eliminate some of the cement there and add some landscaping?
We looked at that. Some of those roots are above the curb. They're lifting the curb from the pavement in some areas. The roots are mangled with some of the metal frames around it. So, it will be very, very difficult.
You can cut those roots. You know, oaks put roots down.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to cut those trees down just to cut them down. I mean, that's a perfectly healthy tree. I mean, what I would do there is try to find another solution which, instead of cutting the tree down. I know that, I know that you guys are the experts, but there has to be some sort of other solution instead of cutting those trees down.
We can look at, into a little further.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Mayor, we will look at that to see if we can see the trees and.
Yeah, well, we'll look at them on a tree per tree basis. I did a walkthrough and there are, I don't know, fifteen or twenty of them through the whole corridor. So, we'll have to address them on a tree-to-tree basis.
One of the issues, Mayor, is we have forty-one thousand trees in the right of way. So, this is a big issue, lifting up sidewalks, lifting up grades throughout the city. It's really a continuous maintenance issue and it can be quite costly because of the fact that we do have those. We're Tree City, Tree City USA city. And when you have forty-one thousand trees in the right of way, there's a lot of maintenance. So, we will be happy to look at that and see how we can save the trees. It's a nice tree.
I think if you go, let's say if you go there midday, you'll experience the fact that there's great shade there. And when you're there, when there's that much concrete and there's that much asphalt, it's just nice to be able to have some sort of canopy there and to protect, you know, the residents and also the businesses.
In the future, we need to look at our sidewalk program because the sidewalk department is really getting hurt by the fact that there's so much maintenance of lifting and so forth. So, it hurts the new sidewalk work. We have to go back and replace existing sidewalk that has been lifted and has been damaged by the trees. So, I think we're going to, I think for the next, for the following years budget, I think we're going to take a look at that to see what we can do as far as looking at maybe a different maintenance budget from a new sidewalk budget because of the effects of the trees on the overall, on that overall one sidewalk budget that we have, Mayor.
Thank you.
We didn't have the quality of staff at a certain point that understood that you need a ten-foot space for the tree. And I think if we just give the tree more space, number one, no one's going to be walking that close to the tree trunk and you can put some nice landscaping underneath it. So.
Yeah, it's just the tree root ball space is very small. And you know the live oak, it's a large species. So, the roots are actually circling themselves now and the trees are becoming stunted. So, not many of them are in good health. So, we'll study them on a tree-to-tree basis.
Well, we did that on Miracle Mile. Some of them had to go because they were in poor health, but others were saved. And we just developed the design around it and gave them more root space.
That was done, yes. That was into structural soil. There's also structural support down there. We have anchors holding the tree down. Structural soil was used. That was a very expensive design.
All right, well, thank you. I just, I'd like to see something in the near future brought to us and maybe we can work on that development. I think the project is Oscar Rogers is the developer.
We'll double check the details of the development.
And I think you can speak to the attorney who happens to be here and he can give you a little bit of an idea. I imagine those will be part of the concessions. So, I'd like to see if, at a minimum, maybe we can even move some of the trees that are healthy that you deem appropriate. Maybe they're in the way because the sidewalk is too small, maybe we can move them.
And also, Mayor, we have the covenants online now, so we can check the covenants. So, there's going to be responsibility for that.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, is there anything you'd like to add before we adjourn?
Come to the chili cook-off.
Yes, come. I'm going, I'm going. Commissioner Menendez?
I'm good.
Anything else?
I have a few things I'd like to add.
Commissioner Forst?
First, I want to apologize to Commissioner Anderson for trying to speak ahead of you. But, understand that I felt I needed to do it and I think we saw why a few moments ago. You know, we're talking about a very important controversial issue that the mayor does not want to continue talking about in the sunshine. He'll often jump to you before I'm done discussing it. And if I don't try to jump in before you, then we move on to a little blue pole in front of Hillstone.
I had flagged, you know, I had flagged the mayor, you know, and again, this is not the first time this has happened between us and you've jumped ahead and you, especially on the fire issue. We will have our shade meeting, we will have our sunshine meeting, and we'll be able to be fully informed on all the issues.
Well, I'm sorry for jumping ahead of you. And it's because he often employs these tactics on, with regard to the fire issue. That's why it's happened with regard to the fire issue. But, I'm sorry nonetheless. Secondly, I want to clarify.
Disagree.
I want to clarify something regarding the way my statements about the text messages were reframed. I just want to make clear that I'm not accusing police and fire, I'm sorry, police and the motor pool of sending any text messages, just to make that clear. I was only pointing out that the substance of some of these text messages and correspondent YouTube videos dealt with police compensation and the situation at the motor pool and they didn't all deal with fire. Third, I want to place on the record that I believe another practice which is unproductive, which deals with, in addition to trying to personify problems and identify boogeymen or boogie women instead of taking the problem by the horns and discussing it as an issue that pertains to the whole city, is, you know, trying to accuse people of politicizing issues. You know, it's not the first time in the last month or so that when the mayor does not agree with one side of an argument, he'll say that, he'll accuse the other side of politicizing it. In my opinion, claiming something is being politicized in and of itself politicizes it. I think that's unproductive as well. And I think, I'm not going to go any further into the compensation of anybody, motor pool, fire or police. We're going to have meetings for that. But, you know, any way you slice it, whether you agree with the tactics being employed or what tactics are being employed during these negotiations. You know, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the commission. At the end of the day, the city is the employer and if your employees, if there's unrest among them, at the end of the day, you're not doing your job of keeping a smooth, high morale environment. You may not be. And you need to look in the mirror and ask yourself if you're approaching this the right way or not. And that's all that I hope that we do during the next sunshine meeting and shade session. I'm not saying that that's the case or not. But, I just want to, everybody remember that at the end of the day, you know, what our employees do and how they feel, whether we agree that, whether we agree with it or not or whether they're even justified in feeling or acting that way, ultimately is our problem. And needs to be resolved one way or another. And I hope we can do that without truly politicizing it by naming people by name and by claiming that it's being politicized. And with that, I have no further comments.
I'm going to respond really quick. I look forward to having a conversation in our shade session to address the fire union. And as I did last year and I will do in the next month, I will be having two meetings that I welcome all my colleagues to attend, which Commissioner Forst never attended. And that was my meeting with all the employees in multiple different locations, not only here in City Hall but in Seventy Second Avenue, to meet face-to-face without the manager, without directors and executives, to face what their concerns are, what their issues are, and how we can continue to work together. I also have a secondary meeting and I look forward to meeting with all the executives and the directors like I did last year to have a separate conversation in regards to what we're doing to push this city forward. So.
And you've sunshine those, right?
I sunshine those meetings and I welcome everybody. And just like I do every single Friday, when you face the music, meetings start at two o'clock and I get not only residents and business owners, but I get also employees who come to meet with me to discuss every single issue. And I welcome everyone, starting at two o'clock this Friday, to come and see me. Vice Mayor, would you like to add anything else to the discussion?
No.
Thank you all for...
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.